Probably a couple more hearings.
Recording in progress.
Hearing is in progress.
Okay, whenever you're ready, John.
Okay. The time is now 5:34 PM. I am calling to order the South End Landmark District Commission March 4th, 2025 public hearing. Commissioners present are Commissioner Catherine Hunt, Commissioner Peter Stanborn, and is that it? And myself. Do we have anybody else?
I'm here, John.
Oh, good. Commissioner John Freeman. I just can't see everybody, everybody's tile who's here. So, and am I still? Wait, I can scroll though. Nope, and that, I believe that's it. Uh, so let's continue. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March 29, 2023 amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until March 31, 2025. We are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the South End Landmark District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom meeting platform and state your name, title, and affiliation. Do we see anybody? If not, Sarah, do you see anybody?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sarah. I'll carry on. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. Go to the agenda. The agenda will begin with violations, followed by design review, then administrative review. We have an advisory review as well tonight, and then we will ratify the meeting minutes of January 7th and February 4th, and then get some staff updates prior to adjournment. So we will start with violations, and I believe we only have one on the agenda, and that is 673 Tremont Street. The proposed work involves the installation of a new roof deck. So if there is somebody representing 673 Tremont Street, please introduce yourself with your full name, please.
Hi, my name is Ryan Shangzuo Pan, and I actually had someone representing me today who will sort of go through the proposed work.
Could you let us know who that is so we could unmute them?
Uh, that'll be Joe. One second.
You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yep.
Hi, good afternoon. Attorney Joseph Roberts for Mr. Pan on the 673 Tremont Street matter. So this is a relatively straightforward issue. There's an existing roof deck, and the existing roof deck was replaced in 2022. And it seems like there's a violation relating to the visibility of the deck from the street. In this presentation, we've included images that indicate that the deck has looked the same way for something around 20 years. And consistent with the Landmark Commission's guidelines, it was replaced exactly in the way that the materials were originally used. And this is particularly relevant because it's true that the deck itself is somewhat visible from the street, but the materials that were used were the same, and only the portions that were damaged were replaced. Now, a lot, if not all, of the deck was damaged because it had been exposed to the elements for several decades. So it's true that that was also, the replacement was extensive. But as far as the deck, it was replaced with the exact identical footprint of the original deck. And the only change that I believe is an issue is that the deck railings were painted. My client has submitted proposed drawings to potentially reduce the footprint of the deck itself. So yes, thank you. These are the images up until current era. If you go back maybe three, yeah. So this is what it looks like now. And going back maybe two slides, something like that, you can see that it's actually more visible over the last 20 years than it is now. And that the replacement was consistent with the historical character of the deck itself. And my client applied to have the Landmark Commission approve the work, which it it was approved, and so these are the permits. I think one of the areas of confusion where there's a, there was an issue is that originally there had been a submission of a, an expanded deck plan, and that was rejected. And so the deck was replaced consistent with new plans, which just indicated that the the roof deck footprint would be identical to how it has been for decades. My client is also willing to change the railings from the historical context of being wood to being iron, to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and to be consistent with the the guidance in the Landmark Commission's governing documents. Whether or not a reduction in the square footage is necessary, hopefully it would be possible to just allow the deck to exist as it has existed. But to the extent that it is necessary to reduce the footprint, to try to reduce visibility from the street, we request that the commission consider carefully the proposed plan of work.
Um, so commissioners, this is Rachel with staff. I'd like to clarify a couple of points. There were some inaccuracies in the statement that was just made. Staff would like to state that there was an application for a roof deck at this address at the 11-1-2022 public hearing. At the request of the applicant, the roof deck was withdrawn from the agenda because we had been in conversation with them saying that the roof deck was very visible from a public way as proposed. We removed it, and we did not hear back from the applicant. We reached out to them several times, seeing if they wanted to get on the agenda going into the winter months, and then we heard nothing. In July of 2023, we received a violation report from a constituent stating that a roof deck was being built that was visible from a public way. We went out and were shocked to see that this roof deck was indeed being built. We issued a stop work order because it was an unapproved roof deck going up. We communicated with the condo owners as well as the actual owner of the unit and shared this information with them. And we expressed that they needed to come and rectify this violation. And then we did not hear from the condo unit owner until the end of last year, when we chatted, explained that the roof deck was put up unapproved. You need to come and have this violation reviewed by the commission, which they happily agreed to do. But I just wanted to clarify that no approval was ever given for this roof deck, and that staff has found that this is the photo that staff took back when the violation was first issued and used on the violation letter. If you have any questions for staff, please let us know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rachel, for that, that history. So I think we can go to questions from commissioners first, which will be followed by commissioner comments and then public comment before we go to a vote. Or we'll actually make a motion before public comment and then take public comment and then go to a vote. So Catherine, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm not sure what they would be, other than why did you do this? So I really don't think it's, there's any point in talking about the design. It was just una- it was unapproved. It went ahead, and they were notified to stop, and they didn't. So I don't know what we would ask about. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we can get into your feeling about the roof deck and the violation during the comments section. So Peter, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have one for the applicant and one for staff. The one for staff is, is there any history of a roof deck ever being approved at that location?
There was.
Twenty, twenty or so years ago.
There was an existing roof deck. I don't think it was ever approved by the commission, but I would have to double check that. I know it was wood, because I actually went out on site visits with the applicant back in 2022 when we were looking at it and sent me saying, this is really visible. You have to reduce the size.
Okay. And my question for the applicant is, you showed, I think, a design approval letter, but you went, you showed it, and it was a very quick view of it, and does that din- design approval letter?
Yeah, so this letter is incorrect. This letter basically has the description of what they applied for on it. It's automatically generated. The, in addition to the roof deck, they also applied for some items that were administratively approved. As I stated earlier, the agenda for the hearing shows that the applicant withdrew the roof deck. So the roof deck was not approved at the hearing.
And the circumstances, Peter, just to also be clear of, this is a typical thing that we do when we review applications, is that some elements stay on design review and some elements stay on administrative review, and the nature of that and how those approvals were, were made very clear by Rachel as well to the applicant. So this wasn't something that was left for someone to decipher. I just want to make sure it's clear. This was all also communicated clearly.
Thank you. Thank you. If nothing else, I'll go to John, John Freeman. Do you have any questions?
Yes, so if I'm understanding this correctly, that all of the railings of this roof deck were removed at some point, because you used the word replaced. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I think that's where the confusion stand. May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
The, the way the regulations work, and when they were written in the 80s, there were already many roof decks in the South End, and they were allowed to stay until they were removed for maintenance. So the way the regulations work is once an element of the roof deck is removed, it has to be reviewed and approved as a new roof deck. It's not, the term used to be grandfathered, whatever is used now, it's not.
Legacy.
The legacy does not continue.
Okay, very good comment, John. So, so we went right into comments. John, do you have any further comments? If not, I'll go to Peter.
Well, I think it's because everybody is in agreement that that was removed, it now gets, it just has to get reviewed as a new roof deck. So that's where we should be. That's my comment.
Okay. Good. And we'll figure out what to do about the violation. I'll come back to everybody for that. Peter, any comments?
No.
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry, staff is just interrupting. Kevin is here.
Oh, great. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, and sorry, I'm outside walking home. I just had a quick question, I guess, for staff, and I was listening earlier. When you say the letter that was referenced earlier was incorrect, what, what was incorrect about the letter?
Sure. So we have an automatic system that sends out approval letters, and the description for the project listed the roof duck as one of the elements that was approved. However, that roof duck was withdrawn from the agenda by the applicant and was not approved.
Okay, and I think someone else said that there was communication about that, you know, clarifying that. Can you just explain a little bit further?
Uh, wait, what do you mean? What do you want me to clarify?
So there was a letter sent saying the roof deck was approved, correct?
So there was a letter that was automatically generated that included the roof duck as one of the elements that was approved. However, that is not correct. The applicants understood that this was not approved. They withdrew it from the hearing. We were constantly in touch with them to have them come back and figure out a way to have the roof deck be built to the right size. So there was no confusion that this project was approved or not.
And the scope, Kevin, I think also part of your question, the scope that is written in there in the determination letter, it's all generated through the online portal, and so it's the exact scope that's written in by the applicant when they're applying with their, with the application. It doesn't rewrite in the text that's written in on the agenda. So, I mean, these are also in, like, this is how all of the determination letters work. But what I was saying before is that the separation, which is standard that we do regularly, which is we sometimes will have an application, and some elements will need to be on design review, and some elements will need to be on administrative review. But we don't want to burden people and ask them to do multiple applications for one project, and we ask them to do just one. You know, we don't want to ask for like multiple fees and all that. So we can separate those items on the agenda, and we do that almost probably every single hearing. And that, the circumstances of how that works, is always communicated to the applicants by staff. So that's what I was saying before, is that they were well informed that certain elements, design review, some were administrative review. The letter that gets sent is kind of just a copy of the application that gets submitted, so the text looks exactly the same as when the applicant submits it.
Okay. No, helpful background, I appreciate it. And yeah, that, that's what I was referring to, and I haven't heard anything from the applicant to suggest otherwise. So I guess I'll just ask the applicant, were you under the impression that the roof deck was approved?
That was my impression. Yes, that's accurate, that the roof deck was approved to that extent. It was very clear that an expansion of the roof deck was not permitted. As to the existing plan, it appeared that it was replacement of an existing structure to ensure that it was safe to be used. So to that extent, there was confusion. I should note that I did misspeak. The application was withdrawn as to the expansion of the roof deck, but as to replacement, it, my client proceeded with replacement consistent with what he believed to be the appropriate course of action. And a last note, again, that with the stop work order, no work was done after that, as far as I'm aware, except I believe the deck may have been painted, the railing may have been painted, and that was an error, and for that, we apologize.
Okay, so your, your position is that the applicant knew or believed that expansion was approved, or?
No, I apologize. The applicant, as I understand it, believed that the expansion was not going to be accepted. And therefore, that expansion request was withdrawn, but as to just replacing the roof deck, I mean, there were significant leaks in the roof itself, which needed to be addressed, and the impression was that it would be permissible to simply replace the existing deck, given that there were damaged elements.
I have a question for staff. If the application, pardon me, component for a roof deck was withdrawn, that tells me that nothing about the roof deck was approved. So I don't know how anyone could presume that anything was approved if the roof deck component was entirely withdrawn by the applicant.
That's correct, Catherine. And the owner may have felt that replacement of the existing roof deck in its existing footprint would not need approval from the Landmark Commission, but that is a mis- that, that's a misunderstanding. That's, that's actually not true. The replacement of the roof deck would also need to come before the Landmark Commission, which is what Commissioner John Freeman had said earlier in his comments. Even in the same footprint, we would have to review it like a new roof deck. So and they were spoken to about it after the application was withdrawn from the agenda by staff. So they were fully informed. So, but we haven't gotten to all commissioners' comments. So Catherine, you've made your comment. Did you have any other comments in addition to what you just said?
No, thanks.
Okay. And Peter, do you have any comments here to add? And you might be muted, Peter. I can't tell because I can't see your tile.
I was muted. I do have a comment, and I guess my view is there's some cloudiness over what happened, given the design approval letter, and is it something that the commission would consider approving the existing footprint of the deck? With the proviso that the railings are replaced without the need for new application?
I personally don't think that's a good resolution here, given the high visibility of the deck, and the fact that the owner was informed by staff prior to the replacement that the deck was not approved. Not just the expansion, but nothing about the deck replacement was approved. So you know, I, I think it's the owner's responsibility to check with staff about this replacement. You can't just go under assumptions. So and it's, it's also visible from ankle views, not just this view. And you know, the, the deck that is to the left, in the building to the left, is farther back, and it's much, it's much better that it's farther back. So I think we have to consider here that there needs to be an adjustment to the footprint if they're going to move forward with this. That's my comment. So is, is staff willing to work with the applicant in onsite mockup, or would staff be more comfortable if commissioners did this?
I'll just say that I think probably with commissioners.
Great.
Well, first of all, John, doesn't there have to be a new application submitted? There is nothing existing about the roof deck. It was withdrawn. So it seems to me, as was mentioned earlier, a new application has to be submitted specifically for the roof deck. The owner withdrew it. So if I'm an owner and I withdraw that, I would think I'd have to say, hmm, where do I stand with this roof deck? I withdrew it, now I have to resubmit it.
Right, Catherine, that's exactly right. And that's, that was exactly the same as my comment, word is slightly differently and maybe better. So I, I do think, however, that appearing on the agenda now is a form of application. Staff, can you tell me if that's true?
Yeah, so they filled out a new application for the violation, so we can use this application number.
So the violation application stands as an application.
Oh, great. That's good.
Right. So the, under this application, we could review the roof deck footprint as a subcommittee. If we were to form a subcommittee, I, I'm kind of trying to keep track of who feels what here, and so far, it looks like three of us feel that the roof deck footprint needs to be reconsidered, and Peter seems to think we could approve the existing footprint, but with upgraded compliant railings. And Kevin, I'm not sure I know where you stand on this.
Yeah, I, I was gonna finish my comment and say that I agree with Peter. And then I have other procedural things that we don't need to discuss right now. But yeah, that's, that's sort of where I.
Okay.
Chair.
Yeah.
I wasn't expressing an opinion. I was actually making a query, so.
Okay. I, I thought you converted it into an opinion, but sorry if I was speaking for you, Peter.
John, may I add a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna check on you next, John, as soon as I'm done with Peter. So Peter, would you like to make an opinion?
Before I make, yes, I do, but I guess I need a clarification. This railing appears to span from the photo here over more than one building. Am I not seeing something correctly?
No, it's just over one.
I think it's just the perspective. I think it's just this angle.
Yeah. Because it's set back, it looks like it's migrating over to the building next to it, but it's not.
Okay.
The building next to it has a roof deck that goes right to its party wall.
But it looked like it was migrating to the building to the left from that.
Oh, to the left? Oh, yeah, I see why you might think so, but no, it's stopping at its own chimney. I think. That's, that's on the party wall. The chimney's on the party wall.
Okay, there's a very odd perspective, I guess.
Okay. So.
So my, so my, my opinion is the same as yours and Catherine's and Commissioner Freeman's.
Okay. Thank you. And John, did you want to add something then?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something, because the questions from some of the other commissioners seems to be about this letter. The letter is very confusing. It starts off, it's called a notice of decision. But mistakes are made, and it seemed to me from the description that the staff reached out numerous times after this letter went out to correct the situation, and I think because of that, the letters moved. So I think we are reviewing this as a new roof deck.
Okay. So I think, having had that full discussion, I feel we're ready for a motion to resolve the violation.
Who wants to be on a subcommittee?
I'll be on the subcommittee.
I'll make a motion to remand this to a subcommittee of John Amedeo and another wonderful volunteer who is about to name themselves.
Well, I would volunteer if I'm able to do that as an alternate.
I will remand this to the subcommittee of John Amedeo and Catherine Hunt.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I think I heard Kevin first. So Kevin, and we'll go to a vote. Peter?
Hi.
Catherine?
I don't think I can vote.
Oh, wait, is Catherine not voting?
Yeah, unfortunately Catherine cannot vote, because I believe we have our quorum.
Wasn't she?
Felicia has joined.
Oh, Felicia is, is Felicia voting?
She's here.
Felicia voting in this application?
Application.
Well, I have heard, I've been on for a little over 10, 15 minutes now. I've heard the comments. But to John's point, I did not hear the initial application nor the presentation. And while I concur with my other commissioners, I do not think that I should be voting on this at this time.
Okay, thank you, Felicia. So if Felicia's not voting, who among us can be voting or shouldn't be?
Sure. So five people can vote. So John Freeman, John Amadeo, Felicia is not voting, Peter Stanborn.
Catherine.
Catherine. Well, Catherine gets us to four, right?
And.
And then so the five people can vote and Krista Board is out. So Kevin Reddy votes for Krista Board.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So everyone but Felicia is voting. So we got.
You got to be, I'll say aye.
Okay. So Catherine is aye. And I've lost track of who I haven't asked. Kevin?
Aye.
And have I gotten John yet?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And I vote with the motion. So the motion carries. So we will organize a subcommittee through staff to meet you on site. And staff can let you know how to prepare for the mockup. If you have any questions about that. So thank you very much for, for coming and, you know, cooperating with the Landmark Commission. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Yep. And we will go to the next portion of the agenda, which is now into design review. And the first one is One St. George Street. The proposed work is to repair three existing bays and re-clad them with new copper cladding. And if the applicant is here, please introduce yourself with your full name and then you can begin to present.
Great, Neil, you should be able to meet yourself.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Neil Rulo. And just for context, my company is Building Restoration Services in Boston. And we're a building envelope specialty contractor, but we also have a design and engineering in-house. So we're also building envelope consultants. I'm the chief operating officer for BRS. And we're working for a property management company by the name of Urban Management, also in Boston, who in turn represents the condominium at One St. George Street in Boston. And we've been working with this condo through Urban Management for some time. And they have a building that is a condo. It is primarily brick. But as you'll see in a moment, there are some, what I refer to as projecting window bays. And through the course of last year, 2024, the condo board has asked us to explore a re-clad of these bays. They are currently clad with wood and they recognize that the wood is rotting and deteriorating. The paint is peeling and those kinds of things. And in budgeting, replacing that wood with a more durable material like PVC or borrel, they came back to us and inquired, well, what happens if we clad these bays instead with copper? Obviously changing the look, but part of the thrust for this was to say, well, this perhaps might be a more durable material than the wood that is currently cladding the bays. So they came back to us, like I said, and we put the question forward for Landmark's review. Again, their hope is that the copper would be something that could be approved. And if not, of course, we would go back to the wood that is there. Again, the book, the building is brick. The bays again are clad with wood. One of the bays, as you'll see in one of the photos upcoming, does actually have some copper on the top. So we'll get to that in a sec. But this obviously shows the site plan or schematic site plan. The building is cornered on East Brookline Street and St. George Street. And there is one bay along the east elevation, which is East Brookline Street. And there are two bays on St. George Street. And again, there's a total of three bays that they would like, they would like to clad with copper. You could go to the next slide.
That's Franklin Square on the right in that picture.
Yep, yep. So this is the north on St. George Street. The two bays you can see on both the left and the right photograph. Again, clad with wood that is painted. There's a man sart up high that has slate or perhaps simulated slate on it. The east elevation, next slide. Obviously the same thing. That's the elevation with the one bay. And the photograph to the right is a little bit closer up. So you can see some of the detail within the wood cladding. We just, you know, being prompted, working through this process, we did put together both some schematic level drawings, which are included in here. We also did some rendering so that there's some sense or can give you a sense of what the copper looks like after it is installed and in a four-year period and then after several years. Those are, next slide, please. Start to get into those. But yeah, these are a little bit obviously closer. This is some of the conditions that they're looking to address and what they're concerned about. Again, the surface wood cladding is, is rotting out and there's paint peeling. Again, to clad with copper is a change, but again, they're hoping that this would be more durable and more long-term. Next slide, please. So this is rendering work that we did. You can see the two bays clad with copper, shiny copper in this case, indicating or simulating, if you will, the bays when they're new. Next slide, please. And after four years of exposure, the copper, I'm sure you all know, as it patina's, changes color, trends a little bit towards green, a little bit towards brown, in some cases even it gets dark towards dark bronze. Next slide, please. This is a little more patina after 15 years of exposure or so. Again, this is a rendering, you know, environmental factors come into play and it's hard to predict, but this was our best guess of where patina might go after four to 15 years. Next slide, please. And there's the recently installed, the four-year version and the 15-year version, again, after patina. You can see in those photographs at the top of that bay, that is copper cladding. It has, it is quite dark, so it has trended that way. We've not been up close enough to it to see why it is patinated that way. It might have been pre-patinated when the building was built in 2001. But the, there is some precedent, if you will, for copper on the building, again, being on the top of that bay. In looking at the neighborhood, there's quite a bit of brick. Other, other buildings that are brick. There's actually a building next door that on East Brookline Street that is brick, but it also has aluminum composite panels, smooth, very different looking than copper. There's actually another building in the public alley behind St. George that has a standing seam metal on it. I, I don't know what the material is. It looks like it's been coated, but it's definitely a standing seam metal. So again, the hope is that they can get into a cladding or excuse me, re-cladding program for these bays. They did explore wood or some more durable material like PVC. We've budgeted that for them. But again, they're asking the question, is this something we could do in copper? So that obviously brings us to where we are today. Yeah, and we've started these as well. They're very schematic level. Just for the sake of, we didn't want to get too far down the road detailing the copper until we knew that this was something that was approved or acceptable. And if it is approved, then we'll consider, we'll finish the detailing and figure out how the interfaces of the copper works around the windows and where it meets the building and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Did we lose John?
Lose, nope, you didn't lose me. I'm here. So the applicant is finished with the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we'll go to questions from commissioners. Kevin, do you have any questions? And you might be muted if we're not hearing you.
I think you just asked for Kevin. I think Kevin said he actually had to pop off really quickly, so I don't think he is here.
Yeah, I don't think he's on.
I didn't hear you, Rachel. Kevin is what?
Kevin is not on right now.
Okay. So John, do you have any questions?
Yes, could you use a pre-patinated copper or patina it in place?
Yes, I could use a pre-patinated copper. You can pre-patina those in place, just in, just as a matter of experience, doesn't seem to go as well. So I would, I would get the copper pre-patinated if, if that's where people want to go.
Great, thank you. That's my question.
Yep.
Okay. Peter, any questions?
Yes, I do. On the photo that's shown here, are you proposing to retain wood trim at the very bottom? Number one, and what's your proposed treatment on the underside of those bays?
Good question. The rendering obviously shows it would, would trim on the bottom. And as you asked the question, I sit here and it would, I say it makes sense that it would, it would be copper. Unless there's some opportunity to capture some of like the trim line that's at the head of the door. And you can see in that picture, there's a door between the two bays and then there's another door to the right. So you could pick up that sight line there. But it would make sense to make that copper. The underside of that, again, we're open to alternatives. And the way we're planning it right now, that, that would be wood or something more durable like PVC, which would be painted. But again, we're, we're open to even making that copper if that's the right direction to go.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Great. Felicia, Felicia, any questions? Felicia, if you're speaking, you might be muted.
My question is consistent with Peter's with respect to what the underside would look like. I, I would sort of vote for wood as opposed to a PVC. But is there anything else with respect to what the commission needs to consider to grant approval to move this to copper?
Well, I think we might find that out during the comments section.
I mean, I guess it's just the question is really about a very specific material choice as opposed to design or things like that. Yeah, I'm curious.
Some of us still on the commission now, we're on the commission in 2001 when this was reviewed the first time. So, and we can, John, Catherine and myself, we were, all three of us were on the commission at the time this was first reviewed.
So it was first reviewed and so now what's weathered is 24 years old. Is that what you're saying?
But we're all only 21s.
We're all weathered.
We're all over 21. That's right. We're 24. So I can imagine the owners here don't want to be replacing the material every 20 years. So I can understand the consideration for an alternate material. But I'll go to others for questions. I've lost track of who I've asked. Peter, did I ask you about questions yet? Or no, you've already asked. So, and Rachel, have you said that Kevin's dropped out or is he here?
Kevin had to leave, but he is planning to return.
But hasn't yet.
But hasn't yet. I'll keep an eye out and let you know if he returns during this item.
Okay, great. Catherine, have I asked you for questions yet?
No, but I have none, but a small correction. I believe this was constructed in 2001. Is that what was said?
Right.
And I didn't join the commission until 2007. So much as I would.
I thought you were on the commission when we reviewed this. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I wish I had been.
I know there was a building on St. George Street you participated in.
Oh, absolutely. That was the, that was the Jesus Saves building.
Yes, right. Which might be next door to this. Or nearby. So.
Thank you.
Okay. So thanks for that correction. And I don't have any questions because my questions were already asked. So I will go to comments. Peter, are you interested and willing and ready to comment?
I find the proposal acceptable viewing what the standards and criteria say. I think if this were not a new building, then I would have a different opinion. But as a newer construction building, I think the commission would have the latitude to approve this request if it's so desired.
Thank you, Peter. Good comment. Felicia, any comments?
Only that, I would agree that if the latitude and the authority is with the commission, allowing this change to copper is appropriate.
Okay. Catherine, any comments?
Just that I think it's fine. Copper. Yeah.
Thank you. And John, comments?
Yep, absolutely. So these are actually historically called Orioles, a bay that doesn't reach the ground. And copper clad Orioles were common in the South End. There's a material that was frequently used. And if I remember correctly, when we originally reviewed this, the commission suggested copper and was told it was out of the budget. So I think using, I, I think the only thing startling is the, is the bright copper would be too bright, but a pre-patinated copper I think would be absolutely great.
So are you recommending that the applicant propose pre-patinated copper?
I would recommend that we approve this with that condition.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that comment, John, because while I think it was very helpful and thoughtful of the applicant to provide a timeline of, you know, patination for red copper installed, red and shiny, and what it might look like in four and 15 years. The initial installation would be jarring, I think. And it would take quite a bit. People would just remember it for the three to four years it would take to dull down. So I think, I think it would be advantageous to go pre-patinated. So I would concur with that. So otherwise, I, I don't have a, I don't have any other objections, so it's being proposed. And I'm glad, John, that you remembered that initially we had encouraged them to go with copper. So that would be consistent with our initial review. So that would be consistent with our initial review. Do we have any direction for the applicant regarding the underside of the Orioles? Because they asked for that direction. Do we have a preference, whether it's wood or a woodlike material or copper?
I don't know historically if copper was used on the sockets. I should know, but I, I don't. I think it would be perfectly acceptable myself. But I think there are probably other solutions. Be acceptable. I, I think we can leave that to staff. Or anything is fine.
I kind of think that the, it makes more sense to me that it either be wood or a woodlike material that can be painted, that would look like wood once it was painted. Just because it seems like it wouldn't have been the place to put copper. I don't know.
I just, you know, the thing, historically, some copper was painted. But I don't think we should recommend that they paint this.
Yeah, or they, yeah, or they could do painted copper on the underside. I would see that too. So and I would be comfortable remanding that to city as well. So would we be ready? It sounds like we'd be ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this as accepted with the proviso that they use a pre-patinated copper. And that they can use copper on the underside on the soffit or any other material that staff allows them to use.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded. So we will ask, now ask for public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And Sarah, do we have anybody wanting to ask questions on this?
So we did not.
Written comment?
No, we did not receive any written comment and I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you very much for that. So we will now go to a vote. Peter?
I vote aye.
Okay, Felicia?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. So thank you very much, Neil, for that clear presentation. Good luck and you can work with staff on the remaining items.
All right. Well, thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. This will be great.
Yeah.
Yes.
The board will be happy. Thank you.
That's what we like. So, and we're glad they're interested in being good stewards of the building.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Amen.
Yeah. So we can go to the next item on the agenda now, which is 161 West Canton Street. The proposed work is to repair the existing front doors and replace glass with decorative leaded pattern. Install gas termination vents and concealing shrouds at existing brick chimney. And replace the existing roof deck railing. So is the applicant here for this? And if so, please introduce yourself with your full name.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Leslie Schneberger. I am the architect for Brendan Bradley and Carrie James, the owners of 161 West Canton Street. Let me make one clarification, please, on the very first part, proposed work, repair existing front doors. It's not replace the glass with decorative leaded. It's placing decorative leaded glass as an extra pane behind the existing. So it's an internal attachment rather than a replacement.
I'm not sure if I read that, Leslie. Sorry.
That's okay. It's, we are repairing the door, but we are not taking them apart and taking the glass out.
This brings up a question for staff. If it's behind the glass, Rachel, is that still in our purview?
I'm thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
I think. It's inside. I mean, I guess this is the perfect setting for it because then the chair can just tell me if I'm wrong. I would think that because it's on the inside and it's, it's, it's on the inside, it wouldn't be because the only times that we are reviewing anything in that sort of capacity is when it's like commercial signage. You know, we don't review like, I don't know, but you tell me.
This is kind of a gray area, Gabby, and I, I think this is worth discussing. Because if it's installed within the, the window frame, it's part of the window and it's like double pane glass of a window and we review that. And, and we would, I think, have quite a lively discussion if somebody wanted to take one over one windows and put a two pane or a six pane window behind it. Where, where the muttons are behind reflective glass. So I would, I would advocate that this is within our purview for that reason. So so I don't know, Gabby or Rachel, does that change how you would view what's in our purview and not in our purview?
So I'm looking at the standards and criteria right now, just going to the top under general, where it says, "The most important feature of buildings are the facades that face the streets and avenues, including all elements of that facade and the front yard and the portions of the roof that are visible from public streets and avenues." So this is, I think, a really tough gray area because, John, I think you're arguing that even though this pane is the pane behind, it's, the pane is behind the front pane of glass, it's still part of the door which faces public streets and avenues and is visible from a public way. So I think if it's part of the door, it would make sense that we would review it. What's other commissioners think?
I agree.
I see John nodding.
Yeah, I'm okay with that interpretation. I just wanted to ask the question.
I think it's a really good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can't see all the tiles of all the commissioners on my screen. So Peter, what are your thoughts there?
Agree with that. But my question is, was the same treatment proposed for the transom? Or was? So there was going to be this leaded glass behind a clear transom?
That's correct.
Well, I guess also we haven't done the presentation. But Leslie just was pointing out that aspect of the scope, which obviously does change.
Right. Exactly. We're just trying to decide if we want to be reviewing the leaded glass or not. So Peter, your thoughts?
It's kind of gray, but I think we should because it's certainly significant design feature of the front elevation of the building.
Okay. Felicia, any thoughts there? Felicia, are you muted?
I think we're in a majority. Can we move on?
Well, trying to give every commissioner their chance to speak. And have you noticed, Rachel, if Kevin's returned or Gabby?
Kevin has not returned. He did email me when he left and said he would return. So I have that time for the record. And so still keeping an eye out and I'm assuming he'll also email.
Okay, great. Then it seems like we are in the majority in thinking we need to review the leaded glass. So we'll proceed. So the applicant can present.
Thank you very much.
Heard the presentation yet.
Thank you very much.
Carry on, Leslie.
So to note, this is the second application that we have made to this commission. Previously, we applied and were approved to an administrative. We're replacing the mansard roof with fish scale tiles, slate tiles, and some corbels that at some point have been removed so that it's more in keeping and matches exactly it flows from the neighboring houses. Generally, what we're doing here is more in an effort to restore and keep the, the building as in best shape and accurate as possible. So the repairs to the door are very minimal. You can see in hardware, there's some minimal added hardware and then the leaded glass being placed behind the panes. One for privacy, but more just for a decorative element in the door. If, I'm not sure who has the presentation, but if you wouldn't mind going to the next sheet, thank you, Rachel. These are just the closeups of the shop, what would be shop drawings for the glass. It is a clear color, but not 100% transparent. If you could go one more slide. The, these are all images just to give examples of what it would be. Please recognize that the one to the far left is actual at the surface. So it is the privacy glass, but at the surface of a door. Whereas example in the middle, and most of all, the example to the right, which is two doors down, is exactly the scenario of behind the glass. So that is how much you can see through. Slightly different pattern. Obviously, all of these are. And so the first, the sheet one ahead shows you the pattern that is being proposed. The next area of work, thank you, is adding gas fireplaces to two of the coal fireplace units. And there are terminations that go along with that. The termination of one is going straight through the chimney at the top and being concealed with a copper shroud that goes around it. The other is going through the brickwork and also has a copper shroud, although that is not visible from the street. And Rachel, Gabby, or Gabriella, if you visited, those were in place and I imagine you didn't see them. The shroud you could see, there was a plywood shroud to represent all the scale and dimension of the copper element that is going to be, is proposed and is requested. There is an existing roof deck railing, which has, actually, I think you're right to go, keep going. This is everything related to the shroud. So you can see it was in place at the time. If anyone visited in the time requested, and the amount of copper you would see from the street. In this instance, you're seeing the plywood. That roof, that railing that you're seeing in the background, that was approved in 2008. It has an interesting approval in that there was a proviso, proviso that the railings were visible from the park. And because they were visible from the park, they needed to be metal constructed and painted black when installed. And there was a slight step back that was requested. And at the time when it was reviewed, that it, it would make it less visible from the park. It is still, and, and we have pictures in here that do show it. And we are proposing to replace it with black metal. And the stanchions or null posts would be same dimension and a top black rail, same dimension, but rather than the vertical spindles, a cable rail, which is more transparent and is, there's actually another roof deck on the other side of the park that is, would be the same as that. We can go through the rest of the images, but that is the, there you go. Now you can see, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why that went yellow. So let me tell you what is on that page because that would be very hard to see. The image at the top far left is, you can see the railing from, now I've lost my cheat sheet. It is the view from the park. And then the image on the top right is from Montgomery Street. And the image on the bottom is the proposed replacement. And with that, questions, comments?
Sorry, I was having a bit of a coughing fit, brought in my throat. So I muted. I'll take it from here, Leslie. So I'm going to ask for commissioner questions first. John Freeman, any questions?
In your drawings, you say the cable rail is not visible from this, you're proposing is not visible from the street. Did you, I'm a little confused, in this picture that we see, that railing is quite visible. Is that not the railing you're proposing?
It is. That was, I apologize. I wrote that on the initial presentation. Simply because I hadn't looked at the filing closely enough from the 2008. And so I knew that it had been approved in 2008 and I assumed it was approved because it was not visible. Gabriella visited and saw that it was. And I pulled the paperwork from it and saw that it had been approved with the provisos that I was saying.
Okay, so are you still proposing that this be cable rail or?
Yes, I am. I am. I, I, I do. It was approved being visible. It was approved being black. And I think that the cable rail is less visible than the black that is there. And it will still be black metal.
And the, the terminal caps that you're proposing for the chimney, just to be 100% clear, the sidewall one is not visible from the street. So that's really not part of the application.
That is correct.
Just the cap.
That's correct.
And the dimension of the cap is about 15 inches. Is that correct?
Yes, we can go back to that. The dimension is on there.
Is it, that's higher than I would have expected? Is it a reason there's that, it's that high?
It's, it's to, you can see in the 3D view, it's to make sure that it's the height needed for the vent itself.
So it's, it's part of the required part of the vent or it's just a screening?
It's the screening. It's because the vent, it's because of the height of the vent itself.
So you're trying to screen the viewer of the vent from the street with this?
That is correct. The, the pipe that you are seeing in the picture to the left has not been cut down. That is not, that, that's a furnace vent. And then next to it and hidden below this is a much larger, I always call them mushroom caps. It's the vent that takes the air in and out for a zero clearance gas fireplace.
And how long has that been, been in place?
The gas fireplace vent has not been in place.
Oh, so that's, so that's part of this, but you're proposing that you screen it rather than expose it?
Correct.
Okay, got it. I think those are all my questions.
Okay. Peter, any questions? You're muted, Peter?
Excuse me. Staff, could you go back to the slide that shows the copper? And could you go back one more? So the the 3D on the upper right, the chimney there is the one we see where that's the one with the photo with the plywood.
That's correct. That is.
So it's toward the front of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All I have for questions. Thank you.
Catherine, do you have any questions?
Yes, thanks. Similar to what Peter just asked, could you go back to the photo showing that cap or whatever it is? I think you called it a shroud, the actual photograph, Rachel? Yes, exactly. Thanks. So the photo on the right, that's plywood around the thing on the left? Is that it? I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
The photo on the right is a mockup of what the copper would be.
So what's white there would be copper?
That's correct.
And it's she, it's masking the vent on the left? Or is it something else?
No, both pictures, it's masking event that is not in place yet because we haven't done the work yet. Both pictures, both pictures are just showing that one is up on the roof, letting you know what you're looking at from street level.
Sure. And the one on the right? The one on the right? the one on the right is what would act, that's the visibility.
That's exactly right.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
And Felicia, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a bunch of questions. And my first one is on, not this, it's about the chimney vent, but not from this view. Can you go to the drawings? Yeah, there. So I have a question for Leslie. The top of the line of the new chimney termination vent, the image on the left, the arrow is pointing to the dotted line showing the top of the vent. So, and this may be a code thing, but my question is, why does the copper need to go so much higher than the top of the vent if all you're doing is concealing it?
It was the proportion of the shroud as we did it. It does not have to go as high. It can come down.
Okay. That's good to know. And then the next thing, can you go back one picture to the photograph? So the item on the left, is that the vent that would be placed on top of the chimney?
If you, on the item on the left, the flat portion does not exist. So this is a stock purchase of it, whereas we're making custom. So the flat piece would not exist in what we're proposing. The parts that go up exactly where the mouse, the cursor just went, from there up, that is what you're looking at, that in the drawing is one foot, two inches tall.
Oh, I see. That would be what conceals the vent?
Yes.
I see. So that's a photograph. Okay, got it. Understood. So then I think I'm done with my questions on the chimney. I want to go to the roof deck. And there, that, that image, thank you, Rachel, if you're driving, or Gabby. So my question for Leslie is, I'm confused as to what the existing roof deck railing is now? And what you thought you had approval for when the first roof deck was built? And why you think it's appropriate to replace that railing with the cable railing? So could you start with what's on the roof deck now?
What is on the roof deck right now is a black metal railing. In fact, I think it's easiest to see in some of the photographs of the shroud in place.
Yeah, I remember them, so we don't have to go back. Okay, there they are.
So that railing right behind the shroud? That is what is in place.
Okay. So, did you say you thought the original approval for the roof deck also approved a cable railing?
No, I did not. I apologize. No, I did not. I researched to make sure that the deck had been approved and that the railing had been approved. And in that, I found it that it had. And I apologize, but I didn't go any further than knowing that the approval typically comes from the fact of a railing not being visible from the street. We were, we were looking to make a minimal railing, which was black metal, black metal nulls and top rail, but with cable rail and horizontal rather than the vertical half inch pickets that are there. Looking at the filing and seeing that the filing acknowledged it was visible from the street and that it was, it could be built, but the contingency was it had to be metal constructed and painted black when installed. We still hold that we really would like to do the cable railing. The black metal pieces that are vertical are going to be the same dimensions as what is in place currently. And as, as you look at a cable railing system, the cables disappear, especially when they're black cables, which is what these are. And so it seems it would be a much less visible railing than what's currently there.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I don't have any further questions, so I think we can go to comments.
John, I do have a further question, if you would, please.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Could we go back to the chimney, the photo of the chimney? So what are you ending up with penetrating the chimney? That black pipe that is there now that will be cut down? And the copper vent, are those the two things coming out of the chimney?
No, there's more. There are two flues in the chimney, and we're using both of them. One flu, the black pipe that you're seeing is for furnace. And the other flu will have a, a large round air intake and a big venting system, a very mechanical looking venting system.
And how large is that?
That is the dashed line that is shown in the drawing. If you, if we go back one more slide, ah, two more slides, sorry. It does, it does not have a dimension in it, but it is the, you can see the note that says line of new chimney termination vent shown dashed.
So how does that relate to the drawing in the upper right?
The element in the upper right, the little square piece that is inside of the shroud, that is the termination. They're one and the same.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Furthering that question, what is the material of the new chimney termination vent that's shown dashed? And what color is the material?
It's a silver metal.
Silver metal.
It's a stainless.
Oh, stainless steel?
Yes.
Okay.
Can that be painted?
Could it be galvanized steel and painted rather than stainless?
I may have misspoke, spoken. It may already be galvanized, and I will confirm that. I have to look about the painting. I can't say because of the heat of what's coming through it. But there are, yes, it can be painted.
Okay.
I take that back. Certainly, we can use, we can do a black. We could paint it.
Okay, great. So I think we can go to comments. John, are you okay going first?
Sure. Starting with the stained glass door, behind the doors, I'm fine with that. I don't have any problems. I think that if, I believe that it fits in with the historic elements of the building and the fact that, especially that it is removable and would not change any of the historic integrity of the door. I don't have any problems with it. Coming to the chimney, I think that the shroud is too big and probably too bright. I can't remember our policy on chimney caps. It seems to me that we've, we've had applications before, and I remember the discussion was that as all of these mechanical elements change with, you know, needs in the energy and changes in technology, that we're going to have to address some of these. However, my personal opinion is that I'd rather not see the shroud, and that's the termination. If we can allow a termination and paint it black, I would prefer that to a copper shroud. And I, as far as the railing goes, our policy is very clear that the steel, black steel picket railing is the only thing that's allowed to be visible. And I know we've experimented in the past to see if any of these other types of railings would be less visible or more acceptable in any way. And each case, we've come back to the steel picket because it fits in with the vocabulary, the sort of the fire escape vocabulary, as we always say. On the south end side, we say that that's not approvable.
Okay.
Okay. So did you, I'm sorry, I, my mind wandered for a second. Did you say anything about the roof deck?
Just the railing. Is there more? I said that I think that the railing has to stay steel picket. And if it stays steel picket, then it's not part of the application. There's no change. Was there more to the, are we looking, was there something else that I'm forgetting on the roof deck?
No, you've got it.
Okay.
So Peter, comments?
Yes, thank you. I agree with John about the treatment on the chimney completely. I think I, I think the shroud is going to draw more attention than other protrusions that were painted to minimize their appearance. So I'd prefer not to see that shroud. I have a different view regarding the door and the transom. Well, what they proposed, I think is aesthetically quite pleasing. I, I think that it is not in keeping with what was there originally. I know the building to the left has a similar treatment. Building to the right appears to have the same door, but with clear glass. My main concern though is I wouldn't want to be in the position of making subjective judgments about with an addition like that is aesthetically acceptable and when it's not, because it's such a personal view. So I would prefer to see both the transom and the door glass inserts move from the application.
Okay. And any thoughts on the roof deck?
I concur with John's comment on the deck.
Okay. Great, thank you. Felicia, any comments?
No, I think I'm just consistent with John's comments around, I'm, I'm okay with the transom door. And I think the, the railing should should deal with what is with usually approvable, the pickets.
Okay. Catherine, thank you, Felicia. Catherine?
I agree with everything John Freeman said about every aspect of the submission.
Okay. I would say that I stand with Peter on the windows for the doors and transom, but agree otherwise with John Freeman's comments. I, I'm uncomfortable putting divided lights behind a sheet of glass where there's reflection over the muntens, even though the muntens are leaded. I find that it looks unnatural and artificial and not consistent with the period where that, that wouldn't have been done in the period to have leaded glass behind a complete sheet of glass. Though if they were going to go to the trouble of making leaded glass, the leaded glass would have been would have been the front pane if they were going to have double panes, but they probably wouldn't have had double panes in that period. I also think the design is inappropriate. We have actually denied ornamental glass in doors and transoms to previous applications. When neighbors on this street and neighboring and other streets where stained glass or leaded glass has been put in transoms and windows of doors, those doors and windows with ornamental glass were done without design approval or prior to the creation of the commission. So I don't see the fact that a neighbor has ornamental glass as supporting putting in the ornamental glass here. It's, to me, it's an expression from a later period, the Art Nouveau period or early 20th century period. And these buildings are not of that period. They're Italianate, they're 1850s or 60s. It's 70s at the latest, but certainly not 1890s. So that's my view, and I would oppose the installation of the leaded glass in the doors and the transom. Otherwise, I feel exactly the same as John regarding the shroud around the chimney and the roof deck. So I don't know if, my position would alter anybody else's position, but I'm happy to allow a discussion to happen. If there is no discussion to be had, then I'm happy to take a motion.
Have you called on Celecia?
Yes, he did.
Oh, okay.
And Kevin is not here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
John, I'd like to offer a further comment.
Yeah, please go ahead. I opened it up for discussion.
Yep. So under section four, entry doors and vestibules from the standards, it says, "All original entry doors and visible elements of vestibules shall be retained and repaired." I guess specifically, you could say it's silent on what is being proposed here. But I think probably a pretty honest interpretation of that is you retain and maintain what was originally built there.
Which would be the plain glass?
Right.
Okay.
Or if it, if it had been frosted glass originally, something, then, then that would be acceptable, but.
Just note for the record that Kevin Reddy returned at 7:00.
Rachel, I didn't hear the end of the sentence. Does that mean he's here?
Yep, just noting for the record that Kevin Reddy returned.
Okay.
That was section four, 4A, 4B speaks similarly to the transoms.
Okay. Meaning retaining the original configuration.
Transom side lights, transom side lights and other features shall be retained and repaired. It may not be removed or locked down to fit smaller doors or frames.
So is what is there now, was that original? Do we know that?
I don't personally know that. Leslie, do you know?
The doors and transom that is there now?
Yeah.
I believe it is. Every, every row house, each, each house in the row right next has the same door and transom.
Okay.
So may I, may I withdraw the railing from the application?
Okay.
As well as the shroud, is it possible though to request the, the vent with it painted black?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably where our motion would have gone, or would go. Leslie?
Thank you.
We, we might just vote on that as part of a motion.
Okay.
Without you needing to withdraw necessarily.
Okay.
Unless Gabby or Rachel, you would advise otherwise?
No, that's fine. You can do the motion.
Okay. So I'm not quite sure how best to proceed here. Would it be best to vote separately on the door versus the other items or?
Sure. I mean, I think, I don't think it's a disagreement in, I think the difference is just an interpretation of the regulations. And I would agree with you if we assume that this is part of the door and that they, and this is to be treated uh, and this is to be treated as a component, as you described it, as muttons on the inside of a uh, of a divided light window and not as some sort of window treatment. So, I, I would, in that case, I would agree with it and we would have a positive vote. Or vote to, to deny without prejudice this aspect of it. Uh, maybe we can uh, do that uh, by denying out without prejudice, they can come back because I suspect it comes down to uh, detail of how it's mounted and and that kind of thing. We don't control what curtains are like either, so.
I was just gonna suggest that, John. We have advised that to others before um, to put either opaque or translucent um, curtains behind the windows. And that, that would not be in our purview. They could do that without needing an approval from us.
These, this is not permanent. It is um, attached with um, earth magnets on the inside, so I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding it as different than a curtain. I, I do understand, of course, what you're saying on the panes of glass, um, but it, it is not they're not permanently in place um, in the doors. And I suppose you wouldn't come for a curtain and perhaps we should not have brought this forward.
At least you're honest about that.
So, John, may I ask the applicant why they're proposing this then? Is it for privacy reasons?
For privacy.
Yeah, she mentioned that earlier, Peter.
Is there? Is there, are there inner entry doors?
No, no, this leads straight into the house. Um, in fact, the stairs, um, you know, as you walk down the stairs every morning in your pajamas, you're gonna be right there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is, you know, I know just because a neighbor does something doesn't mean that it's a good idea to do something, but that is where we did feel we were complimenting a very nice solution that was already two doors down.
Right. But, um, like I said, go ahead.
I'm sorry for May. Um, uh, it is very much in keeping with the, um, I, I also understand what you're saying on the style and the, and the period. Um, again, we were taking the precedent of the neighbor, um, rather than having multiple different uh, configurations and things. This is very much the pattern that is next door.
Very much the pattern that, I didn't hear the last part.
That is at 165, two doors down.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't see this as being part of the door and changing the door. I think it's
Right.
tend to a curtain rod and curtains. But, um. You know, I can be talked out of that. And I, you know, I don't think there's a strong precedent. Certainly if they were gonna remove the glass or remove any part of the door or cut a new hole. Well, I guess they are because the, uh, of the hardware, but we do allow new hardware. Um.
Uh, no, actually, we're just replacing the hardware. We aren't cutting new hardware.
And the hardware is exempt.
Well, I for one think it's a nicer solution than seeing curtains hanging there, so.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you, Felicia.
I agree.
So my, my question about voting is, should we vote separately on the doors?
Sure.
And and then vote on the chimney shroud and the roof deck railing?
Well, I'll make a motion to uh, deny without prejudice the chimney shroud uh, to approve from our discussion uh, of painting the termination black, uh, and if that turns out not to be feasible to returning to staff for other solutions. Uh, and uh, we can either we'll, we'll deny without prejudice the cable railing, um, so the existing railing can stay, staff can handle that uh, administratively however they want. Is that everything on the deck? I think so. But I'll make that move.
Yeah. So, do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, so, um, we can um, take public comment on that motion, then we can come back to another motion for the door. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And um, Sarah, do we have anybody wanting to comment? By raising their hand or sending in something in writing?
We did not receive any written public comment and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll go to a vote. Um. Uh, Catherine?
Hi.
Um, Felicia?
Hi.
Uh-huh, John?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
And um, I didn't call on Kevin because I don't think Kevin, you were here for most of the presentation. So, um, apologies, but um, I think we'll um, carry on and I will vote in favor of the motion. So the motion carries. And we can um, now consider a motion for the doors.
I'd be willing to offer a motion to chairman.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, that the application for the treatment of the doors um, and the transom is denied without prejudice. Um, accepting that the, well, um, that can stand. I was gonna say the hardware, but the hardware is exempt, so.
But I propose an option to that.
Um. You can. I, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure where that's gonna go, but go ahead.
I think Peter, procedurally, Peter needs to finish making his motion and if you want.
I thought he was finished, I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't sure. I, I just, Peter, were you well done?
I was gonna, I was gonna accept the hardware, but then I realized in the course of making the emotion the motion, the thought hardware is exempt, so it was to den- my motion is to deny without prejudice the applicant's proposal for the treatment of the transom and the entry door.
Okay, the door also has like some repairs that are going to be made to the door, right, Leslie?
That's correct.
Just, so, so what you said, Peter, includes that.
Okay, we didn't discuss that, so. I'll be modified.
How about just transoms? How about just the transom and glass?
Yeah, the, I think the patching repairing can be done at staff level anyway.
Right.
Yeah. But just the phrasing of what, of how the motion was made would have made that true, so maybe just say.
I, I move that we deny without prejudice the applicant, the applicant's proposal for the treatment of the transom glass and the glass in the two, two entry doors.
May I? Okay.
Yeah, she.
So, if we were to consider what they're proposing on the glass as a screening device similar to a curtain that is temporary, could we not just approve the application for that treatment uh, as submitted? Without getting into the stickiness of, oh no, that, that doesn't, you know, comply and, and they're not proposing to change the glass. They're proposing a screening device for the sake of, of uh, privacy.
Right, a screening device that looks like a window.
Would you rather have a, some other kind of screening device? That's all it is. It's a screening device that's temporary.
Right.
Just, I'm just asking if, if people could look at it that way.
It looks, it looks like a window with muntens on the inside of a window without muntens.
Looks can be deceiving.
No, not really. You will see the reflection of the glass in front of the muntens, which I oppose. So.
Everyone, sorry to interrupt. I, I think because the emotion has been made, um.
Right, we're supposed to either get a second or a chilled motion.
Yeah, so maybe we'll do that and then depending on what happens um, we'll go from there.
Right.
Cause if the motion doesn't pass, then a new motion will be made.
That's right. Exactly right. Thank you, Rachel. So, a motion has been made, so I would be looking for a second. And um. And I think um, I can second, right, Rachel?
The chair can second.
Yep, so I will second the motion and we will take public comment and then go to a vote. If it doesn't pass, we can take another motion. So, um. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And um. Sarah, do we have anybody wanting to comment?
We did not receive any written public comment and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So, we will now go to a vote. Um. Catherine?
I vote nay.
Okay, Felicia?
Nay.
John?
Nay.
Um, Peter?
I.
And the chair votes with the motion, but the motion does not pass. Um, three opposed, two in favor. So, um. With the motion not having been passed, I would be happy to hear another motion, if there is one.
Well, I move to accept the treatment proposed in the application.
May I offer an amendment to that?
Sure, please.
Uh, based on the fact that it is a magnetic attachment as uh, explained by the proponent and is not part of the door and is not altering any original material in any way.
Thank you, John. Accepted.
Okay, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Do I need to ask for public comment again?
Yes, let's just do it to be official.
Okay. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're recalling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. Um, Sarah, again, are there anybody wishing to comment?
We did not receive any written public comment and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll go to a vote. Um. Catherine?
I.
Uh, John?
Hi.
Felicia?
Hi.
Peter?
Nay.
And the chair votes no, but the motion carries um, with three in favor and two opposed.
That was fun.
That was great fun. That's a first. And Leslie, congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Take care.
Good night.
Yeah. So, um. Now we can um, vote to approve administrative review.
So moved.
Second.
A right to a vote. Um, and um, Kevin, you're here, right? So you can vote on this. Um, which means that uh, Catherine doesn't vote, is that right, Rachel?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Kevin?
I, but I'm not sure why I vote over Catherine.
Um, because your um, your uh, commissioner is absent tonight that you're the alternate for.
All right, I appreciate that. I.
You're the boss of me, Kevin.
If Peter wasn't here, Catherine would be voting over Kevin.
Peter's the boss of me.
I'll send you guys out that diagram.
Thank you.
I know, it's very confusing, but I'm glad you're keeping track of it, Rachel. Thank you. Um, Felicia?
I.
Uh, John?
What are we voting? No, I.
Peter?
I.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Um. And now we, I think, go to advisory review. And we have two items under advisory tonight.
We just did the easy ones. Now, now we get the hard ones.
Yep. Um, so this first one under advisory is seventeen fifty-nine to seventeen sixty-nine Washington Street. The proposed amendment is um an amendment, the proposed work is an amendment to the application twenty-three point zero one five five approved with provisos at the December six twenty-two public hearing with an extension approved at the November sixth twenty twenty-four public hearing. Um, renovate and restore his, the existing historic Alexandra Hotel Building and recreate and or refurbish original historic, historic design elements. On the adjacent parcel, build a five-story addition. So, is the um is the future applicant, the proponent for this work here, and if so, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'll, I'll kick it off this evening. Uh, Pavel Hunt's Development Manager for the Alexandra Hotel Project uh, presenting on the behalf of Alexandra Partners tonight consisting of Thomas Callis and Jazz Bogle. With me tonight, we have a couple members of our team, D'Artagnan Brown, Embark. Um, we have Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law and Colleen Shapen from BCA, our historical consultant, so we'll be uh, sharing the presentation tonight. So, um, we're here in front of the commission tonight, um, as the project has had some positive momentum and we've, we're here to present some changes. I know this project has been through um, many, many uh, layers of approvals with the city of Boston and South End Landmarks. You know, we've been in front of this commission many times. Um, dating back to twenty nineteen, um, but we've had some positive momentum this year, um. Actually stemming from last year, as you may or may not have heard, we were earmarked for funds in the Economic Development Bill um, for restoration of the facade which allowed us to basically step back and rethink the project a little bit. If you're familiar with the previous design, as many of you are, um, the previous design consisted of a thirteen-story building, um, this height and density was needed for many reasons. Um, it was needed to offset the cost of a already very expensive project, restoration of a building that has been abandoned for fifty years. Um, it was also needed to attract a certain number of rooms for a branded hotel to kind of support the project that um, was needed. Um, so, what we're here to present tonight is a, a downsized of the project which we think is very positive. Um, this design is gonna consist of a more of a renovation and restoration to the existing building with an adjacent addition. Um, what this does is actually allow us to pursue historic tax credits for the project as well, which is, again, a very positive thing. Um, none of this would be possible without the earmark of the Economic Development Bill, which kind of starts a domino effect, you know, with that and then the historic tax credits. So, we're really positive and optimistic about this direction and uh, are looking forward to your feedback this evening for the revised design. And um, I'll pass it over to uh, Mark LaCasse to uh, kick us off here.
Thank you, Pav. Good evening, commissioners. We're just delighted to be back and as Pav said, there's been such positive developments with the Economic Development Bill signed by the governor in November and what that does for the economics of this project. Uh, next slide. Next slide. And there's team members and of course, the site is yes, site is located at the corner of Washington Street and Mass Ave, which consists of the existing Alexandra Hotel Building and the vacant parcel adjacent there too, where the Ivory Bean Building once stood and will be um where the addition to the renovated and restored Alexandra will be built. Next slide. Quick overview, just without going over all of these. You've approved this project um, twice before in two thousand nineteen as a hotel in twenty twenty-two as a residential building. Um, and we are now back before you for a different structure, but it is um, legally back to being a hotel use. um legally back to being a hotel use by virtue of our September twenty twenty-four appearance before the zoning Board of Appeal under their final arbiter um procedure. They reverted back to the original zoning. Um so it is currently legally a hotel use, um which is what is before you tonight is a proposed hotel use. The current SCLDC decision was extended by this commission in November of twenty twenty-four for uh another year, or maybe it's two. Um but the the current approval is still valid. And thus, we are proceeding as an amendment to that to, again, downsize what was previously approved. As you will see, basically by just taking the tower off uh to cut to the chase. So next slide. And there it is. But with that, I will turn it over to D'Artagnan Brown from Embark, who will walk you through the proposal for the restoration of the Alexandra and the construction of the um small new addition on the Ivory Bean Lot, D'Artagnan.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, all. Great to see you. Um we're excited to be here tonight, and I think as Pav mentioned, the the project, I think, is we in a really good spot now to see it actually come to life. Um and with that, we've been working with Pav, Tom and Jas over the last couple of months on the repositioning of this project to make it uh financially feasible to go ahead. And uh retaining a lot of the work that the team has done with the past architects CBT in terms of setting up kind of the structure of the building uh biggest difference being here is that the the historic building itself will go through a restoration, the scope of which uh Colleen will will refresh everyone is essentially staying the same for um the the main part of the building here. I'm just gonna draw over the screen. And then we do have an infill proposal similar in akin to what CBT had, uh but just adapted to our um proposal tonight. Uh a couple great things about restoring the building. There are elements within it, like the grand staircase that will be preserved. Um just a very different approach to being able to keep a lot of the inside versus before it was really a facadectomy with kind of this new glass tower coming up. Um we'll walk through it in more detail, but this is just a quick highlight of where it was on the left and where we are proposing on the right today. Uh in the next slide, uh is a is a just a quick summary showing the use is remaining the same. The height uh from the prior thirteen stories is dropping down to just below seventy feet, five stories existing. A couple of things that does, a couple of things that does for us architecturally is just allows to stay out of high-rise, which is great in terms of uh the ability to build this at a a kind of a different uh structural approach. We are dropping the room count from a hundred and fifty rooms down to sixty-eight rooms. We are looking to keep the same components, the ground floor restaurant. Uh we have a cafe and rooftop deck, which we'll show you. And parking remains at zero. And then the amenity um remains as we had before with supporting program for the hotel use. Uh next slide, please. Uh existing additions, uh just as a reminder, again, I know several of the Commissioners, you've seen this, but for the new Commissioners, in case you haven't, this is just the existing state of the building today. Uh next slide, please. Um as we wrap around the building, look at some of the segmental arches on the ground floor, existing structure, and we've had periodic visits to the building just to kind of ensure its stability uh given the length of time. Uh next slide, please. Uh continuing, you know, on with existing conditions. And again, this being advisory nature, I know we'll we'll have plenty of time to get into it, but we just wanted to remind any new Commissioners of where the project is currently. Uh next slide, please. And as we continue, just to see certain aspects of it, and then the party wall uh at the west elevation as well. Next slide, please. Um this scope, and I'll turn it over to Colleen, uh a-again is really staying in kind, but maybe Colleen, if you're on the line and can jump in, that'd be great.
Hi, good evening. Um this is basically the outline of the restoration, uh primarily focused on the two street elevations. Uh we'll be cleaning up the masonry, doing any requisite repairs. Uh some Dutchmen are needed, some crack repairs will be needed. Um we're also looking to restore some of these iron elements that we see in historic images back um around eighteen ninety-nine. So that'll be the cresting along the roof line, uh railing at the top of those bays. And there's some other iron railings on the on the on the Orioles that face Massachusetts Avenue. So that'll all be restored. The uh storefronts themselves will be restored to really give the the return of vibrancy and activity to the building. Um and we're trying to keep all this within traditional uh restoration um means and methods. Next.
Then one key thing to add uh with Colleen is on the front entries on Washington Street with the um adaptation of the design, we're actually able to have it be more true to what it was than the previously approved in the sense that the two metal uh steps that we have here and here, we're gonna actually be able to save and kind of restore versus in the prior for ADA access, we were cutting down and bringing to grade. We actually figured in the infill uh addition to have a half-stop elevator that allows us to get uh ADA access up through that connection, which we'll show you in a minute, into the retail place, the retail restaurant, and keep that all uh level, which is, you know, we think uh kind of a little great win um while going through this process. Uh next slide, please. Uh and a a quick reminder, we are uh or a quick note, rather, we are keeping all of the public realm work uh to the same extent that we had approved in the prior proposal. We did have an initial with the the city, the uh BPDA, just to let let them know from a public realm component that would all be staying. And then the footprint of the proposed addition is uh matches the previously approved as well. Next slide, please. Um and then this is just running through s- schematics as we're working through the program now in the building. You can see the entry to the proposed hotel. This is the half-stop elevator coming up. These are the two uh stepped entries that we'll be able to keep. Uh again, ADA access will come through the elevator into the building. And then, as I mentioned, that uh historic stair that's in the middle will be uh restored and preserved as well. It's not gonna serve as a means of egress. We actually have two new co-compliant stairs that will be put in. Um if you don't mind going to the next slide, we can show you that. Uh so we will have internal to the building to egress stairs. This is kind of a more of a monumental stair. And then the elevator in the new addition that uh goes uh up and down through the building. Uh on the roof deck, uh just supportive to the use, um we are setting in uh just the elevator overrun with an egress stair up, kind of a significantly set-back deck with little pergola design, which I'm sure we'll we'll spend time on. And then that ties to the uh rear stairs as well. Uh in the next slide, please. Um again, understanding, you know, what it is to do a building in the South End. We've had the pleasure of working with this commission on several buildings, so I think we'll really uh pay heed to the design elements as we move through, but we've highlighted kind of the key ones here of uh uh avoiding creating i- imitative and false sense of historic elements, respecting the historic nature of the neighborhood. And we're going to uh propose, similar to what CBT did, a infill design that really emphasizes and has a nice juxtaposition between the new and the old. Um but uh sorry, but to add a place nod to uh just the beautiful detailing that is on the existing building. So with that, if you don't mind, next slide. Uh we've created just a a very simple series of diagrams. Again, really, if you think about it, tower's gone now. I think a couple of the really strong moves that were set up that we look to carry forward was the strength of the ground floor continuing across on the retail band. We have the two Oriole bays. Um I think we consider basic come down to to grade here. And then push back, we have this kind of coplanar surface between the new and the old, and then a very deliberate slot between the two. We are looking to extrapolate the cornice line in a little bit of a more modern take um at the top of the new infill building. And then I will show you just a a couple of initial perspectives uh playing off of the segmental arch detailing that's at the base of each of these bays, transferring that into the entryway of the new uh hotel. Uh we've also looked at the rhythm of the windows, and I think one thing we noticed um that was really well done on the prior approval was the existing building has a very kind of rigorous A B uh ABBABA on the window patterning. On the infill, it was a play of the windows as it moved through, but there were certain elements that uh filigree kind of relief that carried up through, and we've uh kept to a similar tone of that as well. Uh next slide, please. And here you can see, again, uh just as this was a slide earlier with the tower removed, um the infill addition here. And if you don't mind, we'll go to the next one, and we can talk a little bit about it here. This is really where we've uh again carried over the floors, so they are all continuous floors within. Here is the ground floor kind of continuation of that retail expression. You can see the segmental arch playing off of the existing elements uh within the Alexandra. And then the kind of defined slot, again, keeping to the footprint that was prior previously approved and similar tones as well, uh where it's just a a palette of kind of a dark bronze, um and muted bronze that makes up kind of the framing of the windows um getting that nice depth and profile. And then the cladding of the ground floor. We are looking at an opportunity to bring in a little bit of uh cedum or green to that uh top of the first floor roof where it's at, where it sets back, which is something we'll, I'm su- sure work through. And then in the next slide, don't mind, this is a little bit of a zoom in here where you can see uh, you know, we think it's a great opportunity to really look at the detailing and how this all comes together. Uh here you can see the framed entry, kind of this recess set within, very similar approach to what exists on the building today for the hotel entry, uh which will take us through the cafe, the half-stop elevator serving accessibility, and then up through the hotel as well. We have a series of these windows that kind of nicely play and move up the facade. This is that uh notch that um is uh in our minds, really, that clear delineation between the new and the old. And then um they've kind of lattice screening, kind of metal cut cladding that goes uh in certain spots as we kind of move up through the building. And we have a little bit of a study, which I'm sure will come at an appropriate time, but just really looking at some of the detailing and elements that's within the existing building and how that's translated over. Um I think with that, we're set. Again, really excited to be here. I think we're uh optimistic that this can come to life and, you know, look forward to working with the commission on this. And Catherine, congrats on retirement.
Thank you, Dee. I saw your vote. Thank you. That's so kind of you. Thanks.
Hopefully, more time to help us on this.
Oh, you got it.
Um thank you, D'Artagnan and Colleen for your very clear presentation and Mark. Um so um we will go to first Commissioner questions. Um then we will have Commissioner comments. And um I don't know why I have to ask you this, Rachel, but do we ask for public comment during advisory? We're not voting.
No, we do not.
Okay, so um thank you for refreshing my memory on that. So um.
I think you can choose who is the chair.
That correct. You're right. But we're not obligated to.
He wanted to, but there's no obligation.
Right. Thank you, Rachel. So um so uh Catherine, questions first.
Yes, before I ask my question, I just want to thank Alexandra Partners, their entire team for sticking with this project throughout all these years, all these changes, the roadblocks that came up to stop this thing, and i- it's just fabulous that you you stayed with us this long. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, here's my question. First question, how fast can you get this thing done?
How fast can you guys approve it?
Wow, I it's just so exciting. Thank God. Um my second, Tom, sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond and just say like, you know, we we're really invested in this project from all these years. You know, we we went through COVID. We kind of went through all the different like cycles and we love this property and we love, you know, um this this development. And so we we want to take it, make it happen. It's kind of become like a something of passion at this point, something from the heart. So
Mm-hmm.
Um we uh we really want to make this happen. I mean, we're we're really kind of excited that we are able to kind of like financially make it work at this scale. You know, like, we understand that there was like some controversy with the tower and everything. Um and we appreciate um how how we were able to work through it with you guys. Um with that said, you know, we we actually, we like the project the way it's presented today better. You know, and um so yeah, we're we're we we want to, we want to break ground soon. As soon as, as soon as we get approvals, we want to break ground. We have now the, you know, the help from the state, the historic tax credits. We have in- interested investors uh that are like really on board for a project of this size, of this scale, of this investment size as well. So um yeah, and there's some good momentum in in uh in Boston with um you know, the hotel market is 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 doing well. The hotel market is is thriving in Boston, so it's kind of the right moment. Um so and the stars are aligning a little bit.
This is great. Thank you. My other question is an easy one. Uh Colleen presented for the Historic Preservation Firm, I believe. Is this the same firm that was originally with CBT on the job?
Yes.
Okay, that's great, because we were so impressed with their detail and their approach to the uh restoration. So thank you.
Yes, Lisa How, who was originally as since uh retired. Uh she retired, I think, uh end of last year.
See, this is what's happening. Everybody's getting older and retiring, so we need to get this thing done before we all drop dead. Thank you so much. That's it, John.
Okay, great. Thank you. Catherine. Uh John Freeman.
Uh so I just, yeah, yeah, I mean, what Catherine said. Um and I'll save more on that in comment for comments. I just, you made a couple of, it was very briefly that you talked about the restoration part. And I just want to make sure I I understand that in in these intervening years, we haven't seen a substantial deterioration of the Alexandra, that you think you can do everything that you were gonna do five years ago?
Good question.
So it was, we had, we Lisa How, I mean, I can let Colleen kind of respond to that, but last time Lisa How did an assessment of the of the building, she noted that there was minor deterioration from like when she originally kind of um took on this project. So um yes, we're committed to um to, you know, restoring the project as as originally proposed, but I'll let Colleen like expand on that maybe.
Yeah, that's that's correct. Um luckily, we're dealing with a a pretty significant masonry building. Um where we're where we would expect deterioration is like where there was a fire in the roof um many years ago. But but the masonry itself, we do want to go out and we'll do a final um or an additional assessment just to validate what we've previously documented. Um we'll update our details from that point, and we'll make sure that that the restoration proceeds from there.
Great. Well, I think the commission should be part of that, but I'm thrilled to hear it. Um I I am, I don't think I have any more questions.
Okay, great. Before I go to anyone else for questions, I just want to point out to um Felicia and Kevin, who are new to our commission, that um the pediment that you see drawn and rendered there, that is on the top of the center bed. The pediment that you see drawn and rendered there that is on the top of the center bay. Um, is only partially there today. Um, and what they're planning to do is to rebuild from historical documentation. The complete pediment above the partial pediment that's there in addition to restoring the cresting. That um is completely missing, although I think um fragments of it were found on the roof that. Informed the um design of the cresting that's going to be restored. Um, is that correct, Colleen? Did I say that correctly?
Uh, I don't recall if we found pieces up there on the roof, but we have pretty good high resolution images from um historic New England, so. Um, we'll definitely get close.
Mm hmm. That's great. Thank you so much. Um, so I will.
I did have one more question. One of the things, however many years ago it was. Was at the time it was felt that the bays on Washington Street. Were that the Orioles on Washington Streets that essentially had to be taken down. Um, and and rebuilt that they could not be restored. Uh, is that still true?
No. Actually, I mean, maybe D'Artagnan, you can jump in and kind of describe what we're going to do on Washington Street at the bay level. But we're, we're gonna use the the. You know, we're gonna restore them the way they originally uh were. Um, and because we're gonna use the 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 floor, uh.
The floor structure.
Yeah, the floor structure at, you know, with the with the other project, we're removing everything, so.
So what was the original material or what is the material now?
I think, Colleen, do you know the specific material of the of the bays on Washington?
Um, the, are are we talking to the bays on Washington?
On Mass, Mass Ave.
I am, I said Washington, that was.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, it's getting me confused.
Yeah, Mass Ave, sorry, Mass Ave.
That's all right. Um, I'm I'm gonna hedge my bets a little bit. It's sheet metal cladding. So, um.
Okay.
Could be cast iron, could be uh more of a galvanized metal, but um. But we're we're definitely looking, we're calling for those to be restored. Um, I'm not a structural engineer, so I can't speak to that.
I think the Tom hit it on the head is because before, John, the entire guts of the building was coming out. Uh, now we're preserving it. We are starting to work. Kind of in a pre-construction mode with the with the potential GC on looking to save the structure so it can avoid kind of. Deconstruction of those Orioles.
Right.
Um, that that would be the intent. I'm sure there's going to be some significant repair there, but it would be to restore it.
I just remember standing there on the street uh in the cold, having a long discussion about it. John will remember that too. And uh, it it was one of the things the commission was not happy about, but. Obviously, we agreed to be approved. So that's wonderful news. All right. Sorry, I won't interrupt again.
Okay. Um, are you done with your questions, John?
Yes.
Okay, just sorry if I didn't hear you say that.
Oh, wait a minute. No, I'm kidding. No.
Uh, Kevin, any questions?
Um, yes, and only because it was brought up a few times, I think by the applicant and for the applicant. Um, while I'm new to the commission, I'm not new to the South End, so I'm familiar with the the project and excited about the. The proposal, actually. Um. But the question is, you you mentioned the Echo Dev bill that funds the. Uh, proposal. It, are there um contingencies? Are there things that are required before? You would receive the funding that would allow you to continue with the project? And I I asked that because you brought up the Echo Dev bill and also. Um, you said that approval is the only thing sort of. Uh, in the way of shovels in the ground.
Yeah, um. So we, the 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 funds do need to be dispersed and they they will be once the project is is approved. Uh, and you know, we were working with. Uh, some consultants who are helping us at the state level to kind of navigate that process. Um, but they'll want to know that the project is kind of ready to go.
So apart. So part of it, Tom, is just getting it approved as quickly as possible to have that triggering event.
Yes.
So so the application for HTC because the Economic Development Bill. Increased the 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 credit amount. Are you saying that? The application has been submitted for Alexandra or there was a direct line item or?
So 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 there's two separate things. So one, one, there's the Economic Development Bill, which was like a state um.
Mm hmm.
Economic Development Bill that was that included.
It increased the historic tax credit significantly.
And then the historic tax, they're actually unrelated, like we we got a special earmark.
Okay, you got an earmark.
That is, that was just like the state economic uh development bill. And in addition to that, we decided once we started to like go down, when we were doing the the tower.
Mm hmm.
Uh, we weren't able to qualify for historic tax credits because.
Right.
Entire removal of the interior structure and then the tower just was kind of like an overwhelming. Um, change to the to the project, so we weren't able to qualify for historic tax credit. Tax credits under this current plan, which is a much, you know, smaller plan. And kind of like maintaining the 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 origin of the of the original building. We're now able to qualify for historic tax credits.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Saying, yeah, we're pursuing those in parallel to the Economic Development Bill. They're like.
Yeah.
That's true.
And you're one thing as well. The federal, you're doing federal as well?
Federal and state, yes.
Yeah, we've actually engaged um PAL to work with us on the historic tax credit. Uh, application part with our team uh that's on tonight as well, so.
Mm hmm.
That's a parallel process.
Great. So if I could go back to my. My question about the Echo Dev, like the specifically the Economic Development Bill, I know you got an earmark. Um. It was, what are the steps that allow, that release those funds? And I, you said approval and I'm wondering what, does that mean approval here at the Landmark Commission or other approvals?
It's, you know, they want to know that the building is that that we're like we're breaking ground, that everything is kind of in place, that there is. The the remaining financing is in place. That, you know, the whole project is kind of baked and ready to go.
So Kevin, is your question, how many other approvals besides ours do they need?
Well, I mean, well, we we have to go through BPDA. Um, um.
Which which we did an initial meeting uh just recently and they're they're. As you can imagine, excited as well to get this approved, so they're going to help us on an expedited process. Uh, you know, even though we have to do the proper.
Do you have to go back to BCDC?
Uh, no, because we're below um. A hundred thousand square feet now.
Because of the changing, because of the change in size of the project, the Article eighty review takes on a completely different scope. It is now considered small project review rather than large project review. And the degree of difficulty and the differentiation in the approval processes and materials necessary for each of those is. Astronomically different, I'll say. So.
Yeah.
Small project review is going to be much quicker for us at the BPDA.
Those are all positive. Um, yeah.
Yes.
All positive. Uh, yeah, news, yeah.
Started the process also, um, just, we met with the BPDA and we, you know, we're. Preparing our application right now. We're all gonna submit our application.
And 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 the zoning is already in place because all of the zoning has been approved and extended. And that decision was extended and modified to go back to hotel use after conversion to residential use. Long and short of it is, you can always use less than you need and we were approved, you know, for the height, but obviously. It's very different, but in all other respects, the zoning is completely in place and approved and extended through. Two more years because of part of the Economic Development Bill, there's this Automatic Permit Extension Act that extends. All existing permits uh for another two years if they existed between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five, so. That's all good news for us.
Mm hmm. That's great. So Kevin, does that answer your question? I'm sorry, Felicia, does that answer your question?
Uh, no, thank you. It it most, it does, yeah. And I guess my last question is um. If the Economic Development Bill isn't fully funded. You know, let's say your allocation isn't fully funded but partially funded, is this still going to move forward or that's just not a fair question to ask? Which is, it might not be.
We're we're um, you know, between the historic tax credits, you know, and. You know, we're we're, it's gonna make it a hu- make it a harder project to develop, let's just say, like financially. Um, we're really kind of hoping that we can get some of those funds. Um, or all of them, if possible. Um.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And that, yeah, that's that's enough for me.
Okay, Felicia.
So just continuing on with sort of Kevin's. Um, questions, I'm I've been listening to what the ideal timeline is or. Is this looking like a twenty-six construction start? Is that what you're thinking? As I know your permits are extended out another two years, but. Do you think you'll need to?
We were really hoping it's about twenty-five, honestly.
Sort of in October, fall, twenty-five.
Yeah, at least start with an enabling package, get the building going, you know, even if we're. Um, we are engaging in pre-con, looking at a lot of that now. So the, you know, really ready to go. It's how fast we'll get through the BPDA, through this commission. Uh, I have five people from my team on the call tonight just to hear everything so we can hit it live and start drawing tomorrow. Um, you know, jokes aside, but that's how ramped up everybody is to go.
I may add one thing, just, you know, to approvals and everything, you know, one of the things that we've done here and. We're, th- this project has gone through such extensive review, you know, I mentioned this earlier, through all city and agencies. So we're trying to replicate a lot of the things that have already been approved, right? All the commitments to the historic uh restoration. We're keeping those the same. Um, on the kind of BPDA level, there is a lot of community benefits. Transportation items already reviewed, you know, although the project is much smaller, we're keeping a lot of these commitments this the same in in an effort to. Avoid getting stuck in the approval process because, you know, if if the project does get stuck, you know, it puts us in a very difficult uh situation, so. Um, you know, we're we're doing everything we can to expedite this and get this off the ground as soon as possible.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As uh, as also.
Any other questions? Felicia?
Yeah, no, I was just saying that, you know, I've been watching this for over twenty years now, so if it takes an uh. Another eight months or another year, I think uh certainly the um there is light, so thank you.
Only twenty years, Felicia?
Well, I've only been here.
Yeah.
Right.
I suspect folks have been looking at it for much longer than that.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So um Catherine, do you have any questions for the team?
I I already did that. Thank you.
Oh, right. Um, Peter.
Um, continuing the readiness. Uh, is Mass Historic conducting the. Tax credit review for for the federal tax credits? Or are we doing separate reviews?
MHC will be conducting the review.
MHC will be?
Yes, I believe so.
Oh, that's, that's positive, I think.
I believe we have a new re- new reviewer. I think the existing reviewer uh has actually accepted a position with the city of Boston, but um. Um, our historic, P A L will know a little bit more about that, our historic tax credit consultant.
Yeah, they're handling, managing that process.
Our new deputy director or our new executive director. That'll be for the staff.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, and just uh wanting to kind of bring the discussion back to design tonight, everyone. Um, that's what they're here for and that's what our purview is. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Yes.
Yeah.
So.
And I think.
My question, the other question I have is really. Comment, I'll be very interested in. Seeing more detail on the ground floor, the treatment of the ground floor of the addition in your signage plan.
Certainly.
That detail. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Um, so I, and I have a design question. Um, the ground floor of the Alexandra, the historic Alexandra. The, as I, I'm struggling to remember which doorways. Were going to have their steps removed and which doorways were going to have their steps retained. I thought at one point the center doorway was going to have its granite steps removed. But in, in your proposal, you're keeping or restoring. All of the steps at all three entries, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. If you don't mind going back, I think it's Rachel or Gabby controlling, uh, go back, back. One more, right here. Yep, so, oh, right there. So the existing granite will get. Reset as it needs and kind of restored and then the uh. The metal stairs on left and right flanking the center will remain as well. That's really the only modification to what was. Previously approved, we think for the better, because again, it's, you know, we're we're the the. Difference, I think, from the prior with the facadeectomy in the hotel. Entry coming through this main space, we were able to rejigger the plan to move the elevator to the infill addition. It used to be in this, in the prior proposal was in the existing building or footprint of the existing building. So that's where there was that code issue of getting. Accessibility to the elevator. We're handling that in the addition, which allows us to keep the stairs in place.
Yeah, and I'll also add one one thing, you know, uh, with the prior design, you know, and the removal of the structure, you know. Obviously, now with historic tax credits kind of allowing us, you know, to preserve and, you know, although extensively remediate the existing structure. Um, we're bringing up that retail. Uh, ground floor level to what we think is the original elevation, because right now it's stepped, so at some point that front half of the space was brought down to grade. So those flanking doors on either side of that main entrance are lower now, so we're proposing bringing those back up to the existing. Um, historical elevation, restoring the stairs and then keeping the center stairs, which have historically also been there um at that elevation.
Yeah, that's great. Can one of you explain to me which doors will be active? And if any doors will be inactive and always closed?
They'll all be active, the center door, and we'll we'll slot to plan in a second, but I'll just walk through this center door. Um. Will will lead to the existing. Not which will become kind of a monumental grand stair, so not serving codegress, but just more of visual central stair. And then the doors left and right will service the restaurant space.
Okay, and what about the Mass Ave side? Can you explain the entrances there?
Uh, so so this as well will get us um. There there's two doors that will pop down to the basement and then this door actually comes up to that level, which matches this level up here.
Are those doors active? Meaning people can use them, come and go from them?
Uh, it depends on how we work through the. Future restaurant layout, you know, I don't know if they have a separate entry, but uh if you don't mind flipping to the floor plan. I could just show you where that is and and team on my end or Tom just pop.
I think the intent for the.
Do you mind going, sorry, uh, do you mind going to the next sheet?
The intent for the entrances on Mass Ave are more secondary entrances. Realistically, that there's three entrances that'll be kind of the the main entrances. Um, to this building and let me point, grab my arrow. This, that'll be the main entrance to the hotel. Either of these doors will be uh the primary entrances to the restaurant space. Um, we don't know, you know, it all depends on the interior layout of the restaurant, but either of these could be used, you know, if one's an entrance to a bar or kind of secondary. Uh, function space within the restaurant and then one of them will be the primary um entrance. And then there will also be a secondary entrance to that restaurant via the um elevator, as D'Artagnan mentioned, which is fulfilling our accessibility.
Mm hmm. Great. And the the elevator that goes up a half a floor also serves the rest of the floors above it?
Yeah, so this elevator, so John, the elevator. Pretending all of this was gone, the elevator used to be a big bank of elevators here. It was like two, you know, running up to serve the number of rooms. Now, if you don't mind, Rachel, the next sheet. You can see we brought it outside of the existing structure to not med- metal with the. Structural elements of the existing building and that allows us to serve all the floors. We get our two means of egress, you know.
Okay.
These two locations.
Right, and I realized we we don't have purview over the interior, but. Right, and I realized we, we don't have purview over the interior, but just knowing how the interior works helps me understand how the exterior works, so thanks for that explanation. I, and then lastly, I, I realize th- there's so much to discuss here, but, um, is there any streetscape work that will eventually have to become part of your proposal?
So the streetscape.
Paving indoor trees or?
All of that is, all of that is as approved prior by the city, so we're not, we're not changing any of that scope. Uh, that's where, that's where Pavel was mentioning, even though it's, you know, less than half the size, uh, they've committed to all of that work with be, uh, you know, BTD, PIC, everything around the curb, all of that staying the same.
Okay, and then Peter mentioned something about signage, and, um, are you preparing the elevations to have us, um, a clear sign band where signs can be applied?
We will, we'll certainly have, uh, an outline for that when we formally apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, that's the end of my questions. So, um, at this point, I think we can go to comments, and I can almost predict what all the comments will be, but, um, I will, um, I think I'll go to Catherine first, just because I want to hear Catherine enthuse.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're showing this view, because my suspicion is that the the building proposed for the former Ivory Bean site, the design you're showing now, well, originally, it was more to fit in with the tower. Now that the tower's gone, I'm thinking, uh, without delaying the project, I'm even thinking maybe, uh, some kind of a charrette, roll up the sleeves and so on, to get some detail on that new addition, to make more of a transition from the Alexandra to the existing buildings. I think, i- at least in my mind, it comes across as too removed from either side, so maybe some small design changes could be made to, um, you know, change that effect. And I could be completely wrong here, I'm interested in hearing what others have to say.
I'd find that to be a very interesting comment. Thank you, Catherine. But, uh, yeah, uh, did you, and did you have anything else?
No, uh, other than my enthusiasm, which I already expressed, this is fantastic, it, it's just it'll be such a wonderful project for the South End, obviously, that's it. Thanks.
Mm-hmm, great, thank you. Um, Kevin, any comments?
Uh, no, I, I think it looks great, uh, very supportive of the design and, um, hopefully can help push it through.
Thank you.
Great. Um, uh, Felicia, comments?
Uh, none other than, um, I hope we can, I hope we can push this one through to fruition.
Mm-hmm, great. Um, Peter?
No comments, thank you.
No comments, okay. Um, John Freeman?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so, of course, you know, what Catherine said earlier was absolutely correct, and the truth is, anything, if you propose anything for this space short of vinyl siding, I'd be totally on board. If we can get this still, I just think it would be amazing. So, any comment that I make now is in the, in the, in the nice-to-have category, not the must-have category. Um, but I do agree with Catherine about trying to find a little bit more of a transition, a little bit more vocabulary in the, in the new building. I, I was, I've been thinking, sitting here all this time, thinking about the Ivory Bean building, and it was a it was a big loss for the South End because it was unique. There, there, it was the last remaining of a vocabulary of townhouse that didn't exist anymore, that now doesn't exist anymore, and doesn't exist anyplace else in the South End. It was asymmetric, uh, on the facade, because it had a big flat bay on the left side looking at this, and a narrower bay on the right. And it also turns, it was only three stories, it stopped at the third story of windows of the Alexandra and transitioned to a roof with dormers, um, so that it was set back. And I was trying to think, is there a clue to find there to, to make this more uh, transit, make this more of a transition and, and more in the vocabulary of the South End, because right now, if I look at it without, uh, i- in isolation, it doesn't, it doesn't look like a South End building, except that it's the sister of this most amazing South End building. I think if there was a way to make the top story a little different, perhaps, uh, a, a shadow line setback, perhaps something different in the proportions, so that it, it was a little more in sync with the Alexandra, um, I think that would help. Uh, I think, and I can, this is one I'm less sure about, some more asymmetry in the, uh, or, or something, uh, in the, sorry, in the elevation facing the street. Um, you know, nobody else is gonna remember what the, what the Ivory Bean house looked like, but it is something common in the South End to have that kind of asymmetry. Um, so it's something to think about. Um, the other thing, I'm not sure in these renderings what's glass and what isn't. Um, it looks like you're swapping glass with the, uh, with the bronze material. Um, and I'm not entirely sure, that's something I'd want to be clarified. I think it's kind of cool. Uh, and I think it, it, it could be, the reason I bring it up is I think it could be on the track of bringing in some of this asymmetry and some of this differences. But it's, there isn't enough in the rendering really for me to, to understand. Uh, the entrance, I think, um, is very interesting, is, is fascinating piece of architecture. I, I wonder if it would feel, if it could feel a little bit more like a a full unit instead of something that's been pushed out, and the, that because the side is different and plain, almost like a party wall side that's been left off, and, um, if we could find some of the same detail there, yes, exactly, thank you, D'Artagnan. That would, that would be a transitional proportion, you know, proportions that were transitional to the, uh, to the Alexandra. Um, and, uh, I'll say one other thing, when, when they set up the, the, I, the commissioner portal, Nick made my password Alexandra twenty twenty-one. Or I would never change it until this came back, so now I can change my password, so thank you.
We're gonna know what your password is.
I'm, now I can change it.
Well, Alexandra twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Well, I could tell you I could change it too, but, but yeah, I think that was just way of digging at us, because you remember Nick was staffed back when we were going through all of this, so.
Mm-hmm. Well, thanks, John, so, um.
Remember the vinyl signing comment, I'm serious about that, we're on board no matter what.
Thank you.
Right, right. So, um, you know, uh, this is, this is great, um, I'm you know, if I weren't on camera, I'd be doing cartwheels, um, and, uh, so I echo Catherine's, um, enthusiasm for the team sticking with the project um, for so long and being so committed, um, to this project, um, we so appreciate that. Um, thi- this is, you know, obviously, we all feel like this is moving in the right direction, that you're, you're on the right track here. Um, you know, the, I think the, the addition, um, you know, will take, you know, probably hear some comments from some more finessing, you heard some from Catherine, some from John. Um, and I just want to say that when you come back to us with an application, the way I would like to hear you talk about the addition is in reference to our, um, regulations that talk about this as a category A building, and our regulations have a series of requirements that need to be met for category A buildings, and I would like you to identify those requirements that you're meeting with this addition. And, um, and that will make the approval process run very smooth, so that's why I'm asking you to do that. And, um, and there are a series of things it asks you to look at, and as, um, John Freeman has said many times, it, you don't need to check every box in the list of things that need to relate to the existing building next to it, but then you need to check enough of them, and, and maybe the right ones for this particular application. And you're already starting, I can see you're carrying the floor and ceiling lines across, and um, you know, you've got the verticality going, although I think it could be worked a bit more, um, and, um, you know, the rhythm of the fenestration that you talked about, D'Artagnan, um, I, I think is is going in the right direction and meeting some of those requirements, but I, I think it would be good for you to actually list them out. Um, and then regarding the fenestration, I think the thing that, um, I, I, first of all, let me talk about the, the framework for the fenestration. I like the use of the dark bronze, I think you're on the right track there, because, um, it does make the addition um, uh, subservient to the Alexandra, uh, while still kind of carrying its own character. Um, and I like that. Um, it doesn't need to be so subservient that it doesn't have a presence, and I think you've, um, I think you're walking that fine line very nicely, where you're giving the new building the addition of presence without dominating, um, the Alexandra, so, um, bravo to that. Um, and I think the use of the dark bronze is a good choice, um, and, or the various, you know, shades of bronze that you've got going there, and I like the placement of textured bronze, um, versus flat bronze, and, um, and I think that's nice, and, and you, you talk about laser cut screen and all that, you know, we'll probably get into more of those details when you come back for an application, um, to understand more about what that is, but I like the texturing that you're doing there. Um, I, the, the one thing about the fenestration that, um, jumps out at me are the large pieces of plate glass. And, um, they're, they're starting to be more square-ish than vertical. Um, and, you know, the top right one, the second one down on the left, the, you know, you're staggering the large pieces. And I like the staggering, and I think if you introduced one more, um, mullion in, in each of those large plate glass windows, but not to make them symmetrical, um, to the ones below them or next to them, I think you can still keep the staggering going, but I, I'd like to see those large pieces of plate glass broken down. Um, that's my personal feeling, other commissioners may not agree with me on that, but, um, large pieces of plate glass are just un- like that, are uncharacteristic of the South End. Um, so especially since you're replacing a historic townhouse. Um, even though John is right in saying few people will remember what the Ivory Bean looked like. Um, and, um, am I seeing, going down to the ground floor, um, I think John made some good comments there, but the side wall that John was referring to as a party wall, I'm seeing something that looks like there might be a window in that side wall, is there?
Yeah, there is, a- and I think the comment on, on having this read more as a whole rather than a plain makes total sense. So, yeah, we'll certainly look at that.
I, I think past versions may not have had a window on that side wall, and I certainly like the introduction of one, if that's new, um, and I would certainly encourage keeping that, because, um, I, I think I was always a little bit troubled by a solid wall there. And I think if that's going to be an active lobby, seeing it from the outdoor seating of the restaurant would be really nice indoor/outdoor connection, um, for both users of the hotel lobby and people sitting in the restaurant outdoors. Um, seeing ea- each other, seeing each other's activity, I think is, um, attractive and appealing. Um, so I would encourage, um, holding on to that side window.
Is the top of that, where you see a little bit of green, is that a deck?
No, it's, uh, it's like a cedum roof, a green roof.
A green roof. Yeah, and I, I love that.
Yeah, we thought it'd be cool, especially with everybody in the neighborhood looking, you know, down to this extension, rather than seeing EPDM or something, we thought it would be a cool, I don't know, if you don't mind, Rachel, the next shot. You know, just kind of libeling up that edge.
Right.
And so, John, I totally agree, I want a second, and, and, uh, your comment about too much plate glass without division. But I, I'm curious about how you're dividing something on the second floor on the left there. It looks like one of the textured panels, or what you might expect to be a textured panel is glass, and then there's another, it happens again on the fourth floor maybe, in the middle, is that what that's, is that what that's happening?
Yeah, so, so, it's, um, it's like a spandrel glass, because one thing we're trying to figure out is this is, John, will be more of like a window wall system, since we've gotten away from a steel building, we're gonna go to a wood frame. Um, and
Yeah.
The comments raised around the size of the glass make, make a ton of sense, we actually studied a handful of other iterations, so we, you know, love to sidebar and talk through it. I, I think where we ended up here was really trying to keep the glassiness that the, the prior design had at this portion, and maybe what we're hearing tonight, which we appreciate hearing, um, is we don't have to really hold true to that, I think we want to look at this as a unique little study of, of, you know, understanding what is a category A infill, you know, we've done that with you guys, and can easily address through those comments. Look at breaking down the scale of the glass, having a bit of that rhythm and move, how it ties to the adjacent buildings. Um, I think all of that sounds fantastic to work through. Uh, you know, a- and I think here, what we've tried to do, there were some nice elements of, of going, you know, from floor to floor, and so these pieces here was the same window unit that would kind of a spandrel piece instead of a introducing another material, but to keep that kind of glassier quality across the surface of the, the addition.
So the fourth floor middle panel, D'Artagnan, would also be spandrel glass then?
Yeah, because we have a receiving, uh, wall for the, the demising between the two hotel keys.
Same on the second and fifth floor on the left side, those would be spandrel glass panels?
They actually all wore, and, and what we were, if you don't mind, Rachel, sorry, the next slide, they all, they all were made up of the spandrel, and then this filigree or relief detail was in, was on top of it. Which is a similar approach to what CBT had on, on the approval, and we were, you know, and, and just being candid, we were trying to keep to that same methodology rather than, than reinventing.
Yeah, and I, I certainly have no objection to that, I, I liked it then, and I like it now.
I like the transition, I hadn't noticed it until you showed this, uh, close. I think that's working nicely too.
Yes.
As John said, for more alignment.
Right, which, which, that makes a ton of sense, and I think, you know, that will candidly help with the sizing of the units, kind of bring a little bit more scale to the, to the pieces. Uh, you know, I think one thing we liked, which was a little bit of a pivot, but maybe a little bit more in keeping, was just this, uh, you know, using this segmental arch that comes off of the existing building, John printing that around the corner, you know, having this kind of peek-a-boo moment through the lobby as you enter, being able to look back out onto the seating, you know, outside the restaurant, I think all of that's playing for a very you know, good experience coming into the new addition.
Mm-hmm. Right.
John, could I ask a really, oh, I'm sorry, when you're done, a really quick question?
Yeah, yeah, I'll come right back to you, just one second, Catherine. So, on where the Alexandra meets that transition piece that John just mentioned, um, which is nicely handled in this rendering, um, the return from the Alexandra to the transition piece, it's hard to see because it's in shadow in your rendering, but it, in my mind, it will need to look like the Alexandra and not like the transition piece.
This part right here?
The, the return from the face of the Alexandra into the setback of the transition piece.
Yeah.
That, that side piece has to look like the Alexandra.
We were hoping to actually keep the brick that's on the existing party wall. So, so, yeah, so this, John, this is set back, like literally, uh, So, so, yeah, so this, John, this is set back like literally colored a five to six inch shift on that connecting piece. So you saw the old party wall condition kind of repainted, repainted and restored. And then what, what we did here, a little bit different than the main volume was actually carry, this is a simpler, the bronze all the way down with the window. So it kind of recessed to the front facade of the infill.
I'm looking at an old picture. You're right. That's exactly what it did. Yeah, I like that. I think that, that, that is the old party wall. That's nice.
Yeah. So that, that was our thought there to keep, keep a nod to that corner. Have it read as a recess. And, 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 you know, we've done it. Again, I think we've had fun with you guys like on three sixteen Charlotte, the one that we did with Tom opposite the butter. We had a similar moment where we had that Greek Revival brownstone. We set back the bit of metal that broke to the new addition. Similar nod here of allowing that historic structure to stand proud and not be coplaner with an addition.
Okay, so I think that's all of my comments. But, oh, sorry, Catherine, I forgot. You wanted me to come to you. Go ahead.
Just a quick one, kind of related. What are you planning for the exterior of the top two floors facing Northampton Street?
So we, if we zoom out, uh, similar.
Metal panels, I believe.
Yeah, on the side. Party wall detail that we had from CBT that we could show you if you go back one. And then there are, sorry, I forget where it is in the deck. I think if you keep going back, back, maybe, yeah. Yeah. And then, then this portion, which was really on the rear side would have, uh, we have hotel room and keys, which will have windows kind of bringing that fenestration.
Oh, so there will be windows. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And so when you come back, uh, you know, that was always an important view for us. So, um, we'll, we'll want to see all, all the sides.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. So, um, given that this is advisory, we're not asking for public comment and we're not making a motion and voting. But, um, I think given the importance of the project, I think I will ask if anyone in the public attending wishes to comment. And you can, you can raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform if you're on and wish to comment. Sarah, is there anybody raising their hand?
Yes, I do see a hand raise. Lloyd.
Thanks, Lloyd. You may be muted.
Oh, Lloyd, you have to unmute yourself.
Sorry.
There you go. We hear you now.
Starting again, Lloyd filling in from five sixty-three Mass Ave. I'm more than delighted to see the disappearance of the fourteen or thirteen story tower. I think this is a major step in the correct direction. And, uh, I'm excited to see it move forward. That's it.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you, Lloyd. Sarah, it looks like we have somebody else as well?
Yes, uh, Bob. You think you should be able to unmute?
Mano, it's Bob Manachi. Yes. So I'm the biggest fan in the world of this project. Um, I would do anything to make it happen. And I just sent an email or a text message to John Moran, our State House rep, to make sure that funding is in place for you guys. You know, just, just want to make sure that it's absolutely solid, that nothing will disturb it and you'll have everything you need to move forward. That's all. And I, and I congratulate you guys for hanging in on the project. Um, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, I see Carol Blair. You should be able to unmute.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, um, Carol Blair. I'm at two twenty-two Northampton Street and the president of Chester Square Neighbors. And I want to say that I am also delighted to see this. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Okay, I see Jared. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, Jared Cattiani. I live on Mass Ave, I believe less than four hundred feet away. My question regards the, uh, bus stop, the Silverline Bus Stop. This may be a question for BPDA, not SLDAC, but just curious because I don't see it in the renderings. Is there a plan to move it or not? Have a lot of seniors, neighbors who really rely on that bus stop. So I hope it's going to, it's going to stay. Thank you.
It will stay.
Tom or, or D'Artagnan, would you like to just answer that question?
Yep, uh, it, it will be remaining in place.
Okay, great.
I thought it had been approved to move it.
Bob, if you want to jump in here.
In the twenty nineteen approval, um, it was indicated to move in the last round, twenty twenty-two. When we came in front of the SLDC, it was proposed to remain the same.
Okay, thank you. I think we have one more comment.
So that's the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association.
Actually, um, um, my name is Connie Forbes. I am with the Roxbury Neighborhood Council. And we appreciate greatly the honoring of the ceiling for the South End Roxbury area. And this proposal that's being placed right now is so much better and in line with the community. And we appreciate that. And sometimes a little extra effort goes to make these things happen the right way. And I think this is the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, it looks like there's, um, some vocal support out there for you all. And, um, you know, we're, we're going to want to look at the details carefully, but boy, I think this commission is really right behind you on this. So, um, we're going to work with you to make sure that at least you get an approval from us. So, um, yeah, D'Artagnan, you want to say something?
Yeah, no, thank you all for your feedback tonight. I don't know if it's appropriate, so I'm just going to ask the question. Catherine, your comment on kind of rolling up and, and talking through an approach, I think would behoove us all versus kind of coming with a fully baked proposal to you guys and then going back on comments. Is that something? Again, I'm not sure, maybe Rachel and Gabby, how it would be orchestrated where, you know, we could do a little bit of work based on this. You know, are we coming?
I think like work based off of the comments from the advisory review. We can meet with you internally and make sure it seems like the commissioner's comments are being addressed in some way, shape or form. And we can do that before you get to the hearing.
Yeah, but I think we're, we're hoping for something more than that, Gabby. We're hoping, pardon me, almost like a charrette, if there's a subcommittee or something, you know, in the past, we've all gotten together in the same room and rolled up our sleeves. And John mentioned the Jesus Saves Building earlier on, you know, St. George Street. That was a really positive process. And we all want this thing to happen fast. So it, it seems that we should be able to work something out like that out.
Special meeting. Would you want to have like a special hearing, like just for this? Like it's like a one-on-one? Like, I mean, because we can't really randomly, we can't just like say we're going to have a subcommittee. I think like off the bat, like I think that would have, there'd have some sort of application that that would be.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
So since this is just advisory review, I guess we're talking about, you know, getting to the design review part. So that's why I'm saying to get to design review, that would say, that would be what my first step would be.
I see.
I think it would, it should be. And then after that, if you wanted to have the subcommittee of the, you know, two or three or wherever many commissioners who want to meet, if that's what you wanted to do, because that kind of sounds like what we're talking about, like needing this, um, team, like we could do that, but we, that would have to be something that would be formalized, you know?
And is that formalized through coming back to you guys to ask for that?
Yeah. Rachel, so maybe like you guys would come back with an application for approval, we'd approve it with a proviso that the new addition goes to subcommittee and the subcommittee has voting power. You know, to make decisions at the subcommittee level on design, if that's what the crux of
Right.
the final elements of the approval are. But it would all have to be, you know, open to the public, everything like that. At, at this moment, we can't make any of those choices. We need you to come, um, to design review to make those
Right.
official.
Which that makes sense, Rachel. So is it almost like taking this application, resubmitting it as a formal application, forming the subcommittee and then starting that process? Rather than, I, I just don't want us to do like three months of design, come back and then everything gets, you know, they're worried.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think, um, you guys are, it definitely sounds like from the commission's feedback, you guys are ready to come to design review. Um, you could come in April, our deadline, I think, is the tenth or the thirteenth of March for the April hearing. I can't remember which. Um, submit it and then at the hearing, the commission, because again, like you, as an amendment to your original application, like all of the work you guys have already done on the historic preservation elements, like that's already there. It's just the new elements that are really going to be in discussion, which is that new addition. So if the commission wanted to do the subcommittee, that would be the place for it. And then you guys could obviously, subcommittees meet outside of the regular hearing, um, and go from there.
That may be a way to go if the commission felt. Be good.
If, we can also discuss the rest of like the logistics for your next steps forward. You know, offline.
Yeah, we can have a follow-up meeting.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, I think that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. We, and we have another advisory, um, right behind you.
Oh, John.
Is there anything else?
John, Catherine, we can't do cartwheels, but cartwheels, but I would love to just applaud.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's very exciting. So, uh, very exciting. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you all for your help throughout the years as well.
Yes.
Good seeing you all.
Good seeing you.
Yeah.
See you soon.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night. So, um, I actually have to recuse myself from this next one. And even though we're not voting, I don't feel that it's appropriate for me to be part of the discussion. So, um, can I ask you, Catherine, to, um, chair the helm in my absence? Or is there somebody else that would like to step forward to do that?
Uh, I'd love it if John Freeman would do it.
You do it.
Well, okay, um, just a moment ago, I saw that Brett had his hand up. I don't see that now, but maybe.
I'm, I'm going to.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah. Yeah, Brett had his hand up because he's speaking at this application.
Oh, 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 okay, great. Well, then, uh, so we'll proceed with the advisory for six eighty-five Tremont Street. The proposed work is to demolish an existing and build a new multi-story construct, uh, building for Boston Public Library's South End branch. So, uh, do we have, uh, the team representative here who would like to present? Is that you, Brett?
That's me. I'm here to present tonight. Thank you, everybody.
You're a little, uh, weak in the audio. We can't hear you very clearly. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll put my microphone down. Hopefully that's better. Great. All right. Good evening, commissioners. Um, thanks so much for your time tonight. I know the time is getting late, so I'll try to be brief with you all and also keep all of the good feelings from the Alexandria Hotel into this, uh, project. Um, Rachel, if you don't mind going to the next one, uh, or the next two slides, actually. Great. And go one more. Thank you. Um, so just to orient everybody, uh, I'll go back one more, one back. Thank you. The existing library sits at the intersection of Tremont Street and West Newton, and it's adjacent to Library Park. This current design process began with a feasibility study at the beginning of twenty twenty-four that evaluated really several options for the branch. The branch sits within the flood zone and it has been closed since twenty twenty-two due to catastrophic flooding. To date, we've held five community meetings, most recently last month. Um, and we have had a, a very robust public input into the design. The study first identified the programmatic requirements for a branch library in the South End, taking into account, um, some of the needs of the, that the community identified as well as the operational capacity of the Boston Public Library. And the study resulted really in an ideal building program of approximately sixteen thousand square feet compared to the existing library's nine thousand four hundred square feet. So the next step in the study looked at several scenarios for accommodating the program on that site. That included renovating the existing building with a vertical addition above it, renovation with a horizontal addition in the park, um, and several new construction scenarios. Through a very extensive review with city departments and with the community at large, really three themes became paramount. One, the construction must result in a branch that's big enough to accommodate the neighborhood's needs. Two, the adjacent library park should be preserved as much as possible. Uh, and three, the primary floors of the branch should be raised to protect from future flooding. So all of this led us to conclude that really only a new construction project would meet all three of these themes. Um, and that's what we're showing you tonight. So over the next few slides, I'm going to walk you through our analysis of the surrounding context. And Rachel, if you can go to the next one, thank you. So just starting with the street wall along Tremont Street, there's really lots of variety along the street in this area. Uh, the bow front brick buildings are fairly uniformly set back about eight feet. Um, some of the other Victorian area buildings on the street are set back a little bit less. Uh, the twentieth century buildings are set back even less. Uh, that's especially the Concord houses to the south of the library. And two civic buildings in particular in this stretch, the fire station and the existing library have no setback along Tremont Street. Next slide. And the library, um, really like so many of the blocks along Tremont Street, forms an end cap to the wider streets and sidewalks of the north-south streets in the South End. So you can see in this diagram, the north-south streets tend to be sixty to eighty feet wide, but pinched down to fifty feet when they meet Tremont Street. And that's the case of the library here as well. Next slide. Building heights around the library are within a fairly narrow band between forty and sixty feet high. The existing library is an obvious anomaly here. Most of it is no more than eleven feet above the sidewalk, except for the tall central portion of the building, which is about thirty feet tall. Since we're proposing a new building, we know we're subject to the district's guidelines, which call for a minimum thirty-foot tall building. Next slide. And then finally, the architectural character of the library's neighbors along Tremont Street are quite varied. So just in the span of a few blocks, there is Victorian, Victorian era, uh, brick bow front, walk-ups, mid-rise, uh, housing blocks, and even, uh, uh, really groovy mid-century low slung fire station as well. So let's go to the next slide. Um, and we'll have a few context photos of the immediate surroundings of the library. So this one shows Tremont Street and the alley, uh, parallel to Tremont Street. Uh, the next slide shows West Newton and Rutland Square, which are the two streets that intersect Tremont on either side of the library. And then finally, on the next slide, um, these are photos of the existing building. And I want to point out a few things about the existing building. First is that the entrance here is oriented at the southwest corner of the building, adjacent to the park, um, and also set back from Tremont Street. And the second is the little glazing that there is on the library, uh, along the ground floor is primarily oriented to the park. And this important connection between the library and the park is one that we've heard consistently from community members as being one of the defining features of the existing building. Next slide. So looking at the site plan, the existing building footprint is outlined here in red. It's approximately sixty-four hundred square feet. Um, the existing entrance is located at the southwest corner adjacent to the park here. Um, and the new library footprint is slightly larger at seventy-seven hundred square feet. Um, it includes a modest expansion of approximately four and a half feet into the alley and a nine-foot expansion towards the park. The expansion at the alley side takes up about half of the zone that was previously reserved for parking, library parking along the library wall. Next slide. So the new design maintains the entrance adjacent to the park, but orients it more directly to the pedestrian But orients it more directly to the pedestrian flow along Tremont Street. Um, visually, the library will continue to have a very strong connection with the park. Um, and the library construction will require some very modest adjustments to the park. That includes moving the existing brick pier at the park's um Tremont Street entrance, which I'll circle here, just a few feet to the south. Um, to maintain a generous width uh into the park and also adjusting the park's painting slightly where it meets the library. And that's kind of, that's circled in this area here. Um, let's move on now to the building design. Uh, one more slide. Thanks. So. We've really heard from so many community members that the park is a unique and defining feature of the branch. Um, and we want the exterior of the building to reflect this strong connection. Um, but at the same time, we think that the sides of the building facing the surrounding streets have the opportunity to be more reflective of the neighboring brick buildings. So this is the view from Tremont Street across the street from the park. And we're proposing a design that is defined by a very open and glassy entry pavilion that faces a park, which is on the left side of this image. Um, glass walls line the ramp that brings people um up from the street uh at the front door to the raised ground floor. Next slide. So this is an enlarged view of the entrance. Um, a projecting canopy and signage announce the front door and also shelter and after hours book drop. Um, the signage really is a placeholder for now. We're going to have a more complete signage package when we come back to you all for a vote. Um, and we're proposing in terms of materials, uh, warm, light bronze toned metal trim and curtain wall framing. To accent the more glassy entry pavilion that you see on the left. And then the remainder of the building is clad in a kind of a rich reddish brown uh emperor sized brick. Uh, which is one and five eighth inches tall and sixteen inches long. Uh, and these are laid with a standard three eighth inch mortar joint. The building sits on a granite base wherever it meets the sidewalk or surrounding ground grade. Um, and finally, uh, we're using a vertical pleated or ribbed metal panel in the same light bronze tone as a third material on the building. Um, we think that the vertical pleats will provide lots of nice texture and shadow lines. Um, we really don't want that to look like a conventional flat metal sheet. Next slide. So zooming out to the full Tremont Street facade, you can see the building is divided into vertical bays. Uh, that both reference the neighboring bow front buildings, but also the primary vertical grain of the district as a whole. Um, and on the side of the building closer to West Newton, that's over towards the right on this image. The building is clad in brick with punched window openings uh that are articulated with a light bronze toned metal trim. And the building includes a base, middle and top at a scale that we think is appropriate to the two story expression along Tremont and West Newton. So the raised first floor is reflected in the granite base and the sloped window sills um on the first floor. And the parapet is articulated with several courses of projecting corbelled bricks uh to create a shadow line along the top. And that is kind of uh topped with a minimal, very minimal light bronze toned metal cap. Next slide. And before we look at the other facades, we just wanted to show the Tremont Street elevation in a larger context. So at just over thirty seven feet tall, we meet the district's height guidelines. Uh, but we wanted to be very careful not to be too tall so that we would be overshadowing the park. And we've done a number of shadow studies just to confirm all of that. Next slide. So now this is the view from the corner of Tremont and West Newton. Um, the building keeps that vertical base spacing on all of the street sides. And from this corner, you can see the blade sign above the canopy that announces the library front door. I'll circle it here in the image um there. Um, and you can see some of the brick detailing that we're beginning to explore at the window jams. And the inflected brick bays uh to really better articulate the vertical grain of the building. Um, we're starting to take inspiration from some of the detailing of our historic neighbors to introduce um shadow and texture in the brick wall. Uh, but really interpreted with a contemporary construction technique. Uh, and we'll have lots more to show you when we come back uh for a vote on that detailing as well. Let's go to the next slide. So this is the West Newton elevation where uh that brick detailing and the vertical bays continue. Um, as the building gets closer to the alley on the right. Um, the interior program requires less vision glazing. For example, um, on the far right, you can see the fire stair. Uh, behind the vision glazing. So we've introduced um that same vertical ribbed metal panel as an infill material on this facade. Uh, that preserves the base spacing and the punched window openings that we established on Tremont Street. Uh, but provides vision glazing really where we need it. Uh, let's go to the next slide. And then here's that facade in the larger context along West Newton. Um, on this side, the building height is more aligned with a smaller scale of the bow fronts um along those interior north, south streets of the district. Uh, next slide. So approaching the library from the north along West Newton, overall, the library design is quieter uh in keeping with its residential neighbors. Um, there are still defined openings in the brick wall. Uh, but the glass proportion is smaller with the, that ribbed metal panel and filling the majority of the opening. Um, and we're planning signage on this side to identify the building as a library and also to help with wayfinding. Next slide. And in elevation view on the alley side, we really want to be respectful of the neighbors across the alley and limit the amount of glass on the side of the building. To areas really where it's needed based on the interior program. So on the far left of this facade, that continues the inflected brick bays and the punched window language um from the street facades, because that portion. Of the facade is actually visible from West Newton because of the setbacks. Um, but for the portion of the facade that directly abuts buildings across the alley. The brick wall flattens out and the detailing is more simplified. And then at the far right of this image, you see the back end of that entrance pavilion that abuts the park. Let's go to the next slide. So here's the view from the alley coming from the Rutland Square side, um, showing the entrance pavilion facing the park. Um, the park includes an existing picket fence, steel picket fence where it abuts the alley. And our facade registers that boundary by transitioning to the red ribbed metal panel beyond it. Um, we're maintaining the vertical rhythm of the facade on the curtain wall with projecting fins. Um, and we think that's going to give that facade a sense of depth uh and shadow play there. Next. And then just circling back around to the park side. You can see that there's a very strong connection between the interior of the library and the park. Um, this side of the building is predominantly glass to make the interior spaces of the library feel really interconnected with the park. Um, and at the lower level of glass, we've removed every other vertical molyneum to really reinforce this connection. Um, and ensure that there are views to the park when you're moving up that interior ramp of the building. And let's go to the next slide. This is the view, the same view really with the existing trees in the park um included in the view, um, which we're working very hard to preserve as part of our landscape design. Um, these trees are going to provide some much needed shading to the glass facade to help us manage glare and heat gain. But they're also going to provide a really beautiful dappled light inside the library that. We think is going to be the lasting impression of everyone who visits it. Um, so we're really paying close attention to that relationship there. So with that, we can go to the next slide. And I'll conclude my presentation. These are the four elevation views and happy to take any comments or questions. Thank you.
Brett, thank you. I was remiss in not asking you to. Officially state your name, and I think if you didn't do that, please do that. And go ahead.
Uh, my name is Brett Benson. I'm a principal at UTIL and we're the architects for the building.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I gleaned that from your drawings, but it's good to uh let people know. Now, uh, I will go to questions to start with John Freeman.
Thank you. I, I understand that you haven't worked out all the detailing, but I have a couple of little questions about that, about what, where you're going with it. Uh, the first is. I just want to make sure I understand. You're using a brick. That is a, not a standard size, correct? What is it?
It's a standard size. It's commonly available and um, but it is more elongated than a traditional brick and a little bit shorter. So it's one and five eighth inches tall. By sixteen inches long. So the typical brick, you can fit three bricks in an eight inch vertical rise. With this brick, you fit four. In the same eight inches.
And, and how long was it?
Sixteen inches long.
So it's like twice. Okay, that's very interesting. I just want to make sure. It was clear. And in these places where you seem to have a, you, you're folding the brick. Um, how deep is that? How much of a fold is that?
We're still working on the precise dimensions of that, but it's about six inches currently.
Six inches difference. Okay, cool. And then there's you, in this brick area, you have uh in many places a horizontal line. Is that uh a shadow reveal or metal or lined up with the top of the windows in this uh? Elevation?
Yeah, so we're still working out that detail. We don't intend it to be metal. It will be a brick detail that will induce a little bit of a shadow line. Right now, we're showing a slightly recessed uh brick course there.
So it'd be like one, the, the inch and a whatever is height. About one brick shadow line.
Right, slightly recessed from the rest of the plane.
Okay. Um. I forgot my other question, so go ahead.
Thanks, John. Felicia, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Um, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, I wasn't able to attend a community meeting on the library that took place last week of the week.
Actually, Kevin, you're not supposed to, by the way.
Yeah, uh, it's a good thing you didn't attend.
You wouldn't be able to comment.
Right.
Well, am I allowed to ask Brett uh what any of the concerns were?
Yes.
Well.
Oh, no.
Well, it.
Why that would be inappropriate.
We should really stick to, you know. Questions based on the presentation.
Okay.
Uh, and we will have, I can ask for a public comment if, if folks are there. I think you could probably research that, Kevin. I'm sorry, it's. Nine, almost nine o'clock. Uh, any, any other questions? No. Okay, Peter?
Yeah, a couple or requests for clarification. So on the park side, there it looks like there's a wheelchair ramp. And. Could you explain how the whole entryway works? I guess if you're elevating the building, there may be. From the sidewalk, a couple of steps up into the building and how does that relate to the ramp? It's one question. And then. My other comment is the. Elevations on the. Uh. West Newton Street side.
Um. Rachel, maybe it would be handy if I can present my screen and show a floor plan for the benefit of everybody that might. Great, thank you. All right, so let me do this. Um. So Peter, I'll just kind of walk you through the floor plan uh to orient you. Tremont Street is shown at the bottom of the plan here. Um, and there is an entry vestibule, which is at sidewalk grade. Uh, you cross through that and there is an elevator vestibule and um. Landing at a bottom of a ramp. Um, so patrons will be able to walk either traverse up the ramp or take the elevator. To the raised lobby and then the remainder of this um floor, ground floor is raised two and a half feet above the sidewalk level.
So that is all interior space, is that correct?
That's all interior space, correct.
Okay, from the rendering, it looked with that granite. Knee wall, it looked like it may have been exterior.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could we go to the West Newton elevation?
Sure. And Rachel, if you don't mind, I'll just keep driving while I'm here.
Yeah, sounds great to me. Thank you.
Uh, how's this?
Yeah, um. I would encourage you uh on those panels. On the, on the right side there, on the north side. To explore a solution that. Um. Enlivens that more than. Just. A solid dull panel. I don't know if there's intention for any. Display space in there or. Artwork. I don't know if that's a niche that's accessible or. Are those metal panels? Are they flush with the glazing? Or are they set back behind the glazing?
So that's actually a detail that we are continuing to study. Um, we're looking at it both ways. So we'll have a more definitive answer for you when we come back. Um, there's not a lot of room to incorporate a display niche. We're really scraping for every square inch that we can get in the library, given our um site constraints. Um, so right now we're, you know, it's a matter of inches of this metal textured metal panel being in plane with the glazing or a couple inches proud.
Okay, and I know it's early yet, but do you have any sense of the roof mechanicals and. How large they will be and how. Tall and visible they'll be?
So we do have a, it will be an all electric building. Uh, and we have set aside an area on the roof that is a mechanical well. Uh, to get a number of our mechanical pieces inside of that. Uh, we're still fine tuning the relative size of that. It might be that there are certain components that hit, sit on a higher roof. They will all be set back from West Newton Tremont and the park as much as possible, so that the visibility, if any, will be. As limited as possible. And we'll be able to have more definitive answers also when we come back about that.
Okay, thank you.
I think uh Brett has given us such a detail, you know, these renderings are so detailed. It's tempting to get into these. Uh, more minute details, but it is just an advisory and I wonder if we have more general comments. Um, and certainly anything about the demolition that they're proposing as well. John, would you like to comment?
Sure, um. You, you do bring up the demolition and that's an interesting question because we will have to discuss. Uh, the demolition of that building and we will have to approve it. Uh, it is because it's in the district. It's uh. We, what we will have to discuss is whether it's a contributing building or not. It's not of the era of the district. And. But that doesn't, doesn't mean that it's not a contributing building. So. I, I just leave it at that. I think we can go ahead. I think it's likely that we will approve this demolition. Um, and go ahead with the uh review of the, of the new building. Um, did you just want me to comment on that or do you want me to comment on the?
No, please go ahead and comment on the new uh design that's.
All right, the new building. Um, I think it's an incredibly handsome design. I'm very impressed. I, I think it is. One of the nicest things that I've seen uh. UTIL do, and you do a lot of really nice things. Um. I, I think that it is so. Uh, tautly designed that the detailing is going to be incredibly important. Um, and I think the little things that you're implying in this, in these renderings. Like the, the almost sort of zipper edge against the windows is uh, it, it. It will be really important to see how that works and if you can maintain that. Um, in practicality, it's going to be a lot of surfaces that are exposed to weather and pedestrians and. You know, people with hand carts and delivery vehicles. So. Um, it might be worth considering something to try to buffer that even just a couple of inches. Uh, because uh we want, we don't, we want to make sure that these buildings last and stay. Uh, beautiful for a long time. So we also have to review this in the context of the South End. That's our job and that's why we're here, not just to say that this is something is handsome and beautiful. Um, and I think you're well on the way to that. Uh. Because of the way you've proportioned this. Um, on uh, in this view here, uh, where you have such strong horizontal proportions. Most uh. South End buildings are proportioned first long and then vertical. Like you just imagine a typical row house. I'm okay with that here. I think this works, but as we turn down West Newton Street. I wonder if there's a way that we can start to make the West Newton Street elevation become, pick up some of the proportions. Uh, and or details or something else of the townhouses on that street, so it isn't quite as jarring a change. One way to do that might be to uh introduce in the same way that you're now. You said that this, you have less need for vision panels on this side. I wonder if you could uh break that panel further into uh divide it again. Into sizes that start to be closer to the sizes on the townhouses. Um, can you switch to the rendering that's looking down West Newton at the? Yeah, that one. And I can't tell in these renderings, this is a category B building, not category A. So it isn't, it doesn't have to stick to the, to the rules of being contiguous, contiguous, whatever that word is. The rules of being close to the other buildings as much as a category A building. But it would be, it would be nice to see in the drawings how close we come to picking up some of the typical proportions down the street, not just this overhang here. But, but the heights, is there anything that's lining up with the parapet, the eve line, the heads or the sills of the, oh, okay. It's still hard for me to see that, but but I think, you know, if you could zoom in on this in the next meeting and see what we can line up. But I also, this makes me think more that we need to find some divisions on this side which start to, as it moves towards the buildings on the right, pick up some of the proportions of the of the windows on that, on those buildings. I do, now that I'm looking at this, I do see the way that your, your folded brick on the corner there picks up almost the turret or the bay that's on the adjacent. Yes, exactly. And I just wonder if there's a way to, to make that a little more obvious. You know, I, I've often had tell people subtlety is overrated. And if there's a way you can do it without breaking the vocabulary that you've established in this building, I think that would be a really nice thing to do. I also wonder, as you turn into the park, there's, I think the corner that you've turned there is really nice. I, I wonder if this corner, and maybe you tell me that this isn't going to be such an important corner. But the other corners of the building turn so nicely. It seems like this one to me is missing something, partially because of the co-clainer materials and partially because the vocabulary changes at the corner, which is not what you're doing anyplace else. How does that relate to the South End? I'm not sure. You know, it's certainly important that the elevation towards the townhouses, the north side or whatever northwest side, northeast side that that is, have the elements of the, of the townhouse in it and you have the punched openings. But I'm just wondering if there's something that can be done there to turn the corner. And that's pretty much it. I, I want to say again, I really think this is incredibly handsome building. And it's such a tight and finely tuned design, it feels like it here, that it's going to be so important the way the, the detailing works. And I you know, I hope we'll see that resolved.
Thank you, John. Felicia, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, no comments.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
No, no comment.
Peter?
Come on, Peter.
No, you don't need to encourage him.
I don't want to be standing out here.
I think my questions were comments.
Oh, okay, great. I, I do have a comment. I agree. I think this is a just a lovely elegant building. And I, I will say, I am not wild about that BPL signage. We will talk about signage when you come forward of the application. I think the building is so special and that BPL just almost detracts from it. It announces itself clearly as a special building and as a library. I I, I don't know. I, I could be alone in this and it's very subjective, obviously, but I just, I don't like those letters.
Is that panel translucent?
Especially on the West Newton side. Yeah, anyway.
Is the BPL panel translucent? Can you actually see through that?
Yeah, so John, to answer your question, the BPL is made up of, in this rendering, two layers of perforated metal. One with smaller holes, one with larger, so that you read the BPL as a contrasting material through the bigger cutouts of the letters. And it enables us to see, for it to be legible from both sides without seeing the projection of the letter behind it.
And does that metal then continue for the next two panels?
It does. Yes, exactly. So it provides some shading for this. There's a reading overlook, overlooking Tremont Street in the park. Because the trees are coverage here is less so than we have in the park, we are introducing some additional shading on the building there at that corner.
That change your opinion at all, Catherine?
Not in the least. I just think the building announces itself. It's so special. And that just seems to be a glaring, like, who needs it? I, I, I don't know.
Catherine, I agree with you entirely.
Oh, right.
That was a comment I was going to make, but I thought I'd bite my tongue.
No, don't bite your tongue.
Particularly on the, particularly on the West Newton.
Yes.
The BPL over there.
Well, anyway.
I do have one comment, Catherine, actually.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Good, alright.
I like the BPL. That's my, that's
Oh, I knew it.
I, I will say on BPL's behalf, that signage is very important for them. Legibility of buildings as a civic institution, as a public library, as a space literally that is free to all is quite important to them. And we'll, we can definitely come back with more information about that when we do, but signage is a key focus for them on all of their buildings.
I like
Oh, understood. But the, the main library doesn't have anything like that. I mean, it, it, okay, enough said. It announces itself. It's clear. It's a special building. It's a special place. People will, it, it will be a magnet without that. But anyway, okay.
I do like the way the perforated panel bleeds into the other elevation. It gives it a reason to do it.
Okay. Well,
Anyway, go ahead.
In the previous advisory, we did ask for public comment. I, I will. Do we have any hands raised? Sarah, do you see anybody wanting to make a comment?
Yeah, so Carol Blair just raised her hand.
Oh, great. Carol, you want to state your name officially?
Carol Blair, two twenty-two North Hampton Street. My kids grew up in that library. And I'm very pleased that you're, you're building a new one. So I heard someone mention that there might be some artwork on the opaque panels on facing West Newton Street. And I recall there's a beautiful mural in the existing library on the second floor that you can see from outside that says read. And I wonder if it's possible to appropriate that for the new library.
Great question. Brett, would you like to respond?
That's a great question, comment and observation, and one we'll take to heart and come back again next time.
That's a great idea. Could take the place of that BPL. Perfect. Anyone else with a hand raised? Was that the extent of your question and comment, Carol? Uh, okay, even though her hand is still raised. Anyone else? Sarah?
No, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, fantastic. Well, Brett, that was
I just wanted to add that I do like the BPL very much. I think the existing library is, doesn't, doesn't name itself at all. And this is a very proud building. And I just love the BPL. And thank you so much for doing this.
Great. Any, I think that's it for the public comments. So Brett, we, oh, I'm sorry, Keenan? Could you state your name for us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, my name's Kenan.
Oh, Kenan, I'm sorry.
You're totally good. This is less of a comment and more of like a question. I I'm a college student. Oh, sorry, last name. Yeah, sure. It's Kenan Osmanajic.
Thank you.
I, my connection's been spotty, so I've been like kind of in and out of this, but I I'm here just because of a college class. I'm doing civil engineering and I'm just trying to like, kind of get a sense of the process here. I guess I just have a couple of questions, like the process for this library being built. It, it was like the plans were developed and you guys are reviewing them here. Is that?
This is, this is really a preliminary meeting. It's called an advisory session. And they will submit a formal application to the, the Landmarks Commission.
I see. So you guys are kind of advising what that submission will look like.
Yeah, well, some of our comments on their initial plans and drawings, yes.
Um, and
Okay, gotcha.
Hi, this is Rachel. I'm the president, one of the preservation planners for the South End. You're welcome to reach out to us and we're happy to chat with you and answer any questions you might have about our policies and procedures. The best email to do is just email blc@boston.gov. And myself or Gabriella will get, reach back out to you. And like, we're happy to set up a call and chat and give you whatever info you need.
Okay, cool. Wow, that was super helpful. What did you say was the email again?
Um, just B as in boy, L C as in cat, at boston.gov. And just mention the South End hearing and myself or Gabriella will reach out to you.
Alright, thank you so much. I just wrote that down.
You're welcome.
Well, thanks for joining in, Kenan. We appreciate that involvement. And thank you, Rachel, for that excellent response.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And I think that is all for the public comment. Yeah, Brett, excellent. Thank you so much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate it.
We look forward to your application. Thank you. It's a great project. It'll be great. Okay. John, would you like to resume your chairing duties?
John left.
Absolutely. So much, exactly.
Yeah, he didn't leave. He's been here.
Or leave. I didn't see you. Sorry.
Thank you, John.
I recused myself. I turned my camera and my cough, but
But he's been there. Yeah.
I was, I was within reach in case I needed, I was needed. So here I am. And thank you, Catherine, for standing in. So we are now going to ratify the minutes of January seventh and February fourth. I took a look at them and didn't see any, I didn't have any concerns with either of them, although I was not at the January seventh meeting. So I can't really comment on that. Am I allowed to vote in favor if I wasn't in attendance at the meeting, January seventh? I think that you can, but I think in BLC, people recuse themselves. But I think Robert's rule allows you to come to vote on the minutes.
Yes.
Okay. So
So John?
Do we need to take them separately or together? Yeah?
Well, it's Peter. I think it'd be good to do them separately because I was not on the commission in January. So I can't vote for the January minutes.
Good.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve the January minutes.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded.
I'm sorry, John. I'm just rolling a log.
And I'm, I'm going to take individual votes. So John? Yes. Catherine?
Aye.
Aye. Ca- Kevin?
Aye.
Felicia? Felicia still here?
Aye.
Oh, you are. Great. Thank you. And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. So do we have another motion, another motion?
Yes, I move to ratify the minutes from the February meeting.
Do I hear a second? Okay, John seconded. So I will if Peter is voting, does that mean Catherine's not?
Yeah, it means Catherine, Catherine is not voting, but she can make the motion, which she did.
So Peter?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
John? Aye. And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. And we go to staff updates. What do you got?
Really, we, our new executive director started on Monday, Elizabeth Sherva. We're really excited to have her. Gabby is in the process of transitioning to her new position. But until a new planner is hired, she is still going to be helping out with the South End. So you guys still may hear from her.
So who's the new executive director? I didn't hear that.
Liz Sherva.
Okay, great. She's been with MHC for quite, for a long time.
Yes. We're delighted to have her.
Great. She's good.
Another, that final staff update, I am going to send you guys a slide from our training that lists out everybody and who, if you're an alternate, and that will hopefully help us with the voting thing. And I'll just include it like every single hearing email, so everybody has it.
Perfect.
I think that should help with that a little bit.
That's great.
And then I don't have anything else. Gabby, I'm assuming you're, you're good. Alright. Well, then that means, thanks, everyone.
So, so I need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Peter and all in favor?
Aye.
Voice vote?
Aye.
Yep, great. Nice to see you all. Happy spring. It'll be spring the next time we meet. Night.
Good night.
Okay.
Thanks, all.